All right, it is 7:02 PM on February 12th, 2024. My name is Kevin Ellis and the Chair of the Planning Board this year. I'm going to call this meeting to order. As I do so, I'm going to read some brief introductory notes. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts 2023, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You hereby advise that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I, as the Chair, may inform all of their participants of said recording. All right, not seeing anyone. I'll introduce my colleagues on the board, which will serve as kind of an attendance roll call as well. Tracy Schreiber?
Here.
Gary Tonnerfick?
Here.
Rita De Silva? Hey Rita, Rita, you might? Oh, there you are, okay. And Gordon Carr? Yep.
Here.
And again, I'm Kevin Ellis for the record. We're joined by Michael Slavere and Emily Wentworth, our Senior Planner and Community Planning Director respectively. And we can go forward. It's on the agenda tonight, we have two permitting hearings, one a little more narrow in scope than the other. Then we have a series of zoning hearings. We'll start here with the permitting hearings. The first item on the agenda is 57 Ward Street. This is a site plan review. JR Development Group LLC filed an application for site plan review under Section 1I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading, and drainage at 57 Ward Street in Residence District C. I want to state for the record that I listened to a recording in the last meeting, and this is part of that last meeting about which I listened to the recording, and I filled out the Mullins affidavit so I can participate in tonight's hearing. As the planning board left the last hearing, I think there was a relatively narrow request of the applicant, although we're happy to hear any updates from the applicant about the size of proposed swelling in comparison to others in the vicinity with a potential reduction in size based on that information. So I'd ask the applicant at the start of the presentation kind of with that focus and lighten anything else if we might need to hear about the application. But Gordon, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Oh, good. Jeff, are you leading this one?
I am. Jeff Assad here, representing the applicant Joel Filbrick, who's on the call as well, and also his architect Mark Schreiber is on the call. So as you noted, yes, this is a continued public hearing for a site plan review to raise and reconstruct the home at 57 Ward Street. And it was continued from January 22nd in order to address the character and scale of the home. And since then, we have redesigned the home, and I'll share some images of the redesign here. So this is the new front rendering, kind of from the angle, another one from the other side, and a rendering straight on. What I can also do is I'll put the two homes side by side. So this is showing up top, the original submittal, and then the redesigned home at the bottom. And you can see it's more of a farmhouse look. That front gable that was commented on in the last meeting was eliminated. The front porch was extended along the front of the house. The garage was redesigned, so the second floor is now being stepped back, lowering that ridge line and also adding a kind of eyebrow roof line here. The size has been reduced as well. So we originally had a finished floor area of 3,954 square feet. They've cut that back by about 9% to 3,583 square feet. In addition to that, there was 600 square feet above the garage that was not included in that finished floor area because it was to be unfinished. But it was noted that that would likely become finished somewhere in the near future. That is no longer unfinished space. That is now a bedroom above, so it's included in our square footage of 3,583. The length of the home was reduced by two feet and also the depth from front to back. So we also provided you with a neighborhood study. We analyzed the homes within 600 feet, and there are homes of similar size or bigger. This home is 65 Ward Street. It's an immediate butter. The properties connect in the rear, but it's two doors down. This home is 3,300 square feet of floor area with 9,700 square feet of gross floor area. 17 Ward Street is 2,900 square feet of finished, but in addition to that, they have a detached three-car garage with a loft above, as well as a pool cabana, and those outbuildings are not included in that footage. And also, 86 Ward Street is a home that was recently built in 2021. It's a two-and-a-half-story colonial of 3,800 square feet. So we feel that, you know, we've heard your comments from the last meeting. The applicant has made a lot of changes to the design. A big improvement, so we appreciate those comments. And with that, I will pass it off to Mark, the architect, as well as Joel, if he has anything to add.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, so basically, we took your comments to heart, and the massing was quite large with the large gable on the front and the front laundry, which was kind of left to the front gable stuck out, as well as the garage facade read as one continuous, you know, from the foundation to the peak. It was one kind of mass, if you will. So by pushing the second floor area back and making it smaller, we reduced the scale significantly of the siding that you see that's contiguous. In the same respect of that garage, we did the same thing with the right side. We eliminated the entire bedroom that you see on the second floor on the right front. And we also wrapped the farmer's porch around to bring the scale of the structure down. So I think, you know, the comments worked very well. And I think what we've come up with is a design solution, I think, is very sympathetic to bringing the scale down, the massing down. You know, a similar style to this that I've done in the past. Down south, when we lived down south, they considered this a low-country-style home, which kind of has the first-floor roof line blended in with the second-floor wall. So, you know, I feel like the solution we have is a vast improvement over the original design, and I think responds to all the comments that the board had.
Thank you, Mark. Is that it from the team? I just wanted to make sure before we move on to the board discussion.
Yeah, I believe so. We'll pass it back to the board.
Thanks a lot, Jeff. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Rita, please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Womp womp, motherfucker.
Thank you for hearing, and it looks great. I like it. It looks definitely much better with the area, the roof line, and I like it, so I'm good with it.
Great.
Thanks, Rita. Gary, I think you started, but please go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I wanted to say I appreciate your taking our comments under advisement and making the changes. I think it's a noticeable improvement where you're consistent with most of the houses on Wood Street, where the primary residence, the eve and the ridge is parallel to the road, and then the garage or an attached kind of barn garage would have the gable facing the road. So I think it, not only does it reduce the massing in a very significant way, it also relates, I think, to the setting and the character of the houses on Wood Street. So I like it.
Thank you, Gary. Gordon, Tracy, any additional comments?
Only to express the appreciation for hearing the comments and taking them as seriously as you have and the creativity that you've deployed here. Still, you know, you're getting a nice-sized house, but it just, the character and scale of the neighborhood, I was more focused on sort of the smaller ones across the street and it blending in with those rather than the larger ones. And I think this redesign achieves that certainly much more than the original. And, you know, we have a lot of these conversations with a lot of residential developments and reconstructions. I would say our comments are not always taken and responded to in this way. So I appreciate all of the effort.
You're here, Gordon, thank you. Tracy, anything else?
Not really. I really like the porch. I think that does a nice job scaling the structure down.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Tracy. Nothing else I can add. I just want to confirm that there have been no other changes right to the drainage analysis, anything along those lines, right? This is just a change to the architectural renderings.
Yeah, this is the only change. I did submit a revised site plan, but the only difference on that plan was the footprint was two feet narrower and two feet reduced in depth. Otherwise, drainage, I'll stay the same.
Thank you. That's expected. It sounds that the board's ready to move forward here. Any members of the public on the call wish to comment on this?
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, please, Mr. Filbrick, go ahead.
Hi, Joel Filbrick, JR Builders. Appreciate all the comments. Appreciate you hearing us tonight. And we definitely, we definitely heard you at the last meeting and did some review. We spent some time looking the neighborhood over. I think somebody had commented that it was more of a country road neighborhood than, you know, cul-de-sac area. So this is definitely, this new design, we spent a lot of time working with it. You still get a lot of square footage out of it, but definitely blends in a lot better with the neighborhood. So one other thing just to add, we had eliminated the back patio off the site pad, off the site plan, and we changed that out for a deck, which sort of brought the footprint of the house back up closer to the house. And it was just something that we noticed when we were going back through the design. We thought was an improvement. I think, Jeff, you had reached back out to Con conservation to look at that. So I think that they had no problems with that change.
Yeah, that's correct. I should have noted that. I forgot about that. But yeah, the rear pervious patio is now a deck. In conservation, had already approved of the project, but they've now approved that minor modification to it.
Thank you, Mr. Filbrick, and thank you, Jeff. That's very helpful. Any other members of the public on the call wish to speak on this night? So please just say your name and address for the record and go ahead. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. So with that, I think the board will move forward. This is a site plan review, so we have some recommended filings, and then we have a motion that has several subsections. And those recommended or proposed findings are as follows. That the proposed development, as conditioned by the approval, will adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the respective occupants, the occupants of the neighboring properties, and the use of adjoining streets or highways, and the welfare of the town generally. And two, or B, is that the proposed development meets all applicable design and performance standards, with the exception of a standard under Section 1I, 6IIC, to allow existing driveway opening of 38 feet in width, where the limitation is 24 feet. Waiver the standard to allow the 38-foot-wide driveway opening to remain will not adversely impact the interest set forth in subsection A above. With that, I'd suggest or make the following motion, and it has parts 1 through 7. Grant the applicant, application of JR Development Group LLC for site plan approval under Section 1I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading, and drainage at 57 Ward Street in Residence District C, subject to the following conditions, and they are 1 through 7. 1. Prove a recording. The applicant will file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such recording with the application for a building permit. 2 is a pre-construction meeting. A pre-construction review meeting with inspection of the erosion control installation and mark limits of clearing shall be required before issuance of a building permit. 3 is limits of work tree protection areas. During clearing and/or construction activities, the marked limit of work should be maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. All vegetation beyond the limit of work should be retained in an undisturbed state and no stock piling atop soil or storage of fill materials or equipment may occur within the protected area. Without limiting foregoing, protected trees to be retained shall be surrounded by temporary protective fencing or other appropriate measures before any clearing or grading occurs and maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. Protected barriers shall be large enough to encompass the critical root zone of all protected trees to be preserved. Inspection of the protected barriers shall be required before issuance of a building permit. 4 is construction vehicles. All construction vehicles shall be parked on-site. No construction vehicle shall enter the premises before 7:00 AM on any given construction day. 5 is inspections. Inspection shall be required during construction and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of all elements of the project related to or affecting erosion control, limits of work, and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the project. The planning board may require at the opposite expense the establishment of a consultant fee account pursuant to Mass Gen Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53G, to fund the cost of such inspections. 6 is an ASB Plan requirement. Upon project completion, an ASB Plan must be submitted to the Building Commissioner prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and in no event later than two years after the completion of construction. In addition to such other requirements as are imposed by the Building Commissioner, the ASB Plan must demonstrate substantial performance with the stormwater system design and performance standards of the approved project plans. And 7 is maintenance of protected trees. Each protected tree retained shall be maintained in good health for a period under less than 24 months from the date of final inspection or issuance of a certificate of occupancy, if applicable. Should such trees die or be removed within such 24-month period, the owner of the property shall be required to replace such tree with a tree consistent with the requirements within nine months from the death or removal of such protected tree. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, yeah.
Gary there, a second? So a quick roll call vote on that. Gordon Carr?
Hi.
Tracy Schreiber?
Hi.
Rita De Silva?
Hi.
And Gary Tonnerfick?
Hi.
And I'm in eyes, well. Mr. Filbrick, best of luck. Thank you, Jeff, very much.
Thank you, all right.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 95 Wampetuck Road. This is also a site plan review. Here we have Dutch Keach filed an application for site plan review under Section 1I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading, and drainage at 95 Wampetuck Road in Residence District A. On note for the record that our peer of engineer, who I do not think is on the call tonight, has submitted four different letters/reports to the board, and they are available online, and the board has reviewed them. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant to give us a presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Pat Geesley, project manager over at 95 Wampetuck. Basically, we had started the project under the notion that we were below the 5,000-square-foot land disturbance. We then added some loam and seed recently, and then it was later determined that we actually breached that threshold, the 5,000-square-foot threshold. So we are now going back to address that with the stormwater plan. I do have Guillermo on the call from the engineering firm to go into more details about that if you have any questions regarding the stormwater and drainage plans that they have developed for us. Just making sure that, you know, anything that was altered during the construction is handled properly.
Do you want to walk us through the site plan here so we can get a sense of what the project looks like and where there might be issues? We do have some public comment, and Pat Brennan in his reports has identified a couple of issues that seem to be unaddressed, but we can hear you kind of go through them.
Yeah, Guillermo, do you mind driving in here?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yeah, can I share my screen very quick?
There's a mic, can you handle that? Thank you.
Let me know if you can see the plan.
Yep, please go ahead.
Okay, good. So for drainage, we're proposing to capture the existing and the proposed roof with downsputs going to these storm tech chambers. These are four chambers with crushstone below. We designed the system to reduce the runoff for the 100-year storm. And we have the reduction here. We have all the events existing and proposed. We received some comments from the peer reviewer, but at this point, I think we address all their comments. The comments were regarding a test pit for the system at the tree yard line and cotton field clogs and setbacks. And I think that's it in terms of the comments we received. If you have any comments, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. So we did receive one public comment, you know, with some images, which is always helpful. Can you talk to us about that public comment and where that's located on the site plan and what you plan to do to address it?
I'm sorry. Sorry.
We received a letter from an abutter that had kind of shown us some pictures of the disturbance along the property line essentially, and some, it looks like soil that had been turned, and there's a significant slope. Can you talk to us about that spot on the site?
I would refer to Patrick for that.
I can take that one. Yep, so when the excavator was on the left side, there was, I think by mistake, he had encroached a little bit onto the neighbor's property with a, like a rock wall. That was since moved back onto our property. You know, it was, I think we had between like four and five feet to work with over there. So not done intentionally, but during that, the slope was kind of created, created a greater slope, which was then backfilled to get back to where it was before. I know that, I was reading through the comments, it looked like some of the vegetation was a concern that that had been removed since it is just soil now. So, you know, happy to, I talked to the neighbor as well, you know, asking if they had a preference of what we put back onto the soil, if they wanted it, you know, to be grass, if they wanted planting, something like that. But if, you know, if the board has a better idea or, you know, requirement for that, we're happy to hear that as well. Given that it's February, probably not the best time to be planning anything, but, you know, we can certainly do that when we need to and when it will actually take.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the colleagues on the board and kind of talk through this. So another project, we're kind of coming in, you know, mid-project to some degree, taking the applicant as word that it's inadvertent.
I guess Kevin had some comments.
Sure, go ahead, Gary.
By looking at the plan that's on the screen, the wall that was relocated from the neighbor's property is the upper-left wall on the plan?
No, it's actually further down. That was an existing one.
So the area that, that was an existing wall. So I was confused reading the, I was looking at the stormwater management plans, and I'm trying to get an understanding of, could you show us on this plan where you, where the wall was and where you've relocated it?
So if you, I guess where that, where you see the wall on there, like the existing one, it was kind of below that. So along this, along the house line going down.
Put the cursor to the left side.
I'm not, I'm not actually in control of that, but there we go, okay.
That zone of the plan is where the, where the slope is and where the stormwater runoff issue is, right?
Correct.
All right, so the wall that was, so in that area, is there a wall on the abutters property to the left? Or is, I'm trying to figure where you moved that wall?
So it was, it was too far to the left. So we'll say just for, I don't have the exact measurement, but we'll call it, if it was a foot onto their property, it was then moved a foot back over to the right to be on our property.
I see.
I use a foot just to make it easy to describe, but yes.
No, I understand. So the natural runoff from the property to the left, which is higher than your property. Have I got this right?
Yes.
Okay, so that runoff, there isn't any, is there a reason why you couldn't have used that wall as a retaining wall to reduce the slope of the finished grade to reduce the amount of runoff going on to the abutters property or?
There's not, I mean, we didn't really intend to do a retaining wall there. I guess it can be explored. I know that the neighbor was, I mean, I think they had done some, I think Jeff is on here actually right now, so he might want to speak in a little bit, but I think they had actually explored doing that as well. So I'm not sure if they, you know, have further thoughts on that right now. The, you know, this small rock wall we have right there, I guess it does allow the slope to be a little bit, a little bit less because it does come up a little bit, and we were able to backfill to, you know, to the point of where it was before.
Yeah, and a couple of reasons I'm asking. One is, I see on the stormwater management plan that you had on the rear of the yard, you had an infiltration system, whereas that's not being placed in the new plan. You're just having the infiltration down by Wampetuck Road. So that the area of the site that's on the middle to the back of the site is really going to be surface runoff, right? Trained to this? Or are you collecting it in some manner? Are you collecting the roof drains? It's kind of hard to read from the plans how you're, how you're moving the stormwater from the rear of the site to the front of the site, to the infiltration structure.
Gotcha. I'll let Guillermo answer that one if.
Yeah, no, the infiltration system was designed only for the roof runoff.
Only for the roof runoff?
Yep, correct.
In a situation, it's relatively narrow. The setback is what, 4.2 feet or something? And it seems to me that that's not very much room for water to run between two properties. And it's just, from what I can understand, it's just, it's just going over lawn? Is that what the proposal is to, you know, stabilize the grades and what have you?
That was, I was reading the peer review, reviewers' comments, and that's, I mean, he seemed to think that everything that we're proposing would suffice. And then, aside from needing to add that vegetation back to, you know, where it was before, which was that slope right there.
Yeah, because the original vegetation was, you know, ground cover or shrubs or what have you. I was curious as to how you ended up with seed as an alternative, so. It just seems to me it's at risk of erosion.
Gotcha, yeah. We haven't really decided on seed. That was just, you know, we had asked the neighbor just because it was technically, it's on their property, if they had a preference. I'm just trying to, you know.
I see. Yeah, I was wondering why you didn't consider Pakistan or something like that, which is a really good soil stabilizer, but.
And we, yeah, we're definitely open to suggestions or, you know, whatever's going to please the board here.
Happy to jump in. Gary, good evening. My name is Jeff Machado. I'm actually the 95, 99 Wampetuck Road property owner, and obviously the one that submitted the public comment regarding the slope. And I just want to acknowledge Patrick has been very helpful in working with us to backfill that property. But as I stated in the email, the real core of the concern is what you just got at, which is the erosion and the slope and what we were essentially needing to put there in order to stabilize from our side, given that it is, the majority of that slope is on our property line, with only that four feet of setback between our line and theirs. So before we kind of went through this process, I think we were hesitant to make any determinations on having them to put vegetation back or anything of that nature, such that we'd have to go back and potentially revise it after this discussion had occurred. So really, we wanted to, you know, and to the benefit of Patrick and the team, just make sure that we wouldn't have to duplicate any efforts before, obviously, there was a formal review of what that slope looked like, what the stormwater report looked like, and then really just take the advice of the planning board on what the best next steps are. But happy to continue to work with them as the adjacent property owner.
Yeah, one of the, I appreciate that. It gives a good understanding of the context. And, you know, I was just wondering, this is on the north side of the new house, and it's going to be in shade most of the time. So I don't know if grass is going to work in terms of erosion, something to think about in terms of stabilizing it. If it was the south side, it would probably take hold a lot better, but it's going to be in shade and, you know, ice and what have you. So, okay. The other question I had is, I noticed that the shaded addition that's closer to the street is closer to the lot line than the existing house. Is this, is this a setback? Is this a Hatfield project, Kevin? I'm just wondering in terms of these side yard setbacks, because the existing setback requirement is what, 15 feet? And is this Residence District A?
Yeah. Michael, Emily, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that.
Go ahead, yep.
15 feet, yeah.
And Gary, in short, yes, they're going no closer to the lot lines than either the allowed setback or the existing setback. So yes, Hatfield is applied in a few different places here.
So they're not making the, they're not increasing the level of nonconformity? Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm still, I just, you know, the, looking at everything is essentially surface runoff. And the roof drains, you say, are collected with a below-grade pipe and then brought to the infiltration area? Or is that running over, over grade too?
Sorry, can you repeat that, please?
How are the roof drains being collected? Are they?
Gores and downsputs?
Yeah. And then are they, are the downsputs being collected at grade? Or how is the water going from the?
Underground piping, yep.
Oh, so, okay, so it is being trained? Okay, all right. Well, that makes a difference then. Okay, I guess that's all the questions I have for now.
Thanks, Gary. Rita, Tracy Gordon, don't want to put anyone in the spot, but any specific questions to the applicant here?
Well, I guess, so the public comment that Mr. Meisho submitted, which I think was on Friday, he sort of asked, he's asking us to validate or verify the plan. And I'm sure that we haven't had an opportunity for Pat to look at that, Michael, and I don't know if he could, since he's our peer review kind of expert on these things. Do we need his take on this? Or is it as simple and straightforward as it seems?
So Pat actually did weigh in on this one, Gordon. He provided.
Did I miss it? I'm sorry.
It's okay. He, yeah, he commented on the slope going from this abutters property and essentially noted that the existing condition today is that slope that exists going towards 95 Wampetuck Road, so this property. But before the project began, there was vegetation stabilizing it. So in order to make sure that that slope does not further erode and that those drainage patterns remain the same that exist today, at least, he's recommending that that portion be seeded with grass. And then, due to the slope being greater than 3 to 1. Um, and then due to the slope, uh, being greater than three to one, um, one of the design and performance standards that the board, um, or that the bylaw requires, um, is that there just be an erosion controlled blanket to also help stabilize that. So it's kind of a, a dual, uh, measure there when, when it's a little bit of a steeper slope. Albeit a smaller.
Okay. Uh, although I think Gary's point about, uh, trying to get grass to grow there may be a bit of a trick. So it may be something else, but we can defer that to the, uh, applicant, the neighbor to figure out the best, uh, coverage as much. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. Tracy, Rita?
I think, I think they covered everything. So, um, I'm good. And, and any, um, I just asked the applicant, any suggestions or Patrick, what you would put on that side instead of just grass seed? Uh, grass?
You know, I can, um, I don't have anything that I have listed here. I can, I'm happy to, you know, go to my landscaper, go to the excavator, um, you know, ask them for their suggestions or, you know, even like, sounds like Pat had, uh, proposed grass, which were maybe deemed not suitable. So, um, maybe I can even see if, you know, the peer review has another option as well.
Yeah. The other thing I might suggest still is could you talk with your landscape architect about what a, uh, what a good, uh, planting, uh, material would be, you know, something that's ground cover or low maintenance? Um, I, 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 I am very concerned about grass, especially on the north side of a building. I just don't think it's sustainable. So there are other ways of doing it where you get a pretty good root system in there.
Okay. Yeah. Like I said, we, you know, definitely didn't have our hearts set on grass specifically. It was just, you know, whatever we need to do to, uh, you know, to, to please, uh, please the board here.
And just as a, a quick point of clarification, given that it sounds like the discussion is relevant to the fact that what any planting would actually be done on our property to clarify, because that rock wall is, I think it's the furthest point. So that would just be between myself, Patrick and, and the landscaping team right now. Um, there is nothing required beyond just a recommendation that we should shore up that potential for erosion. And obviously anything that will go on there would be kind of within our purview, given that that's our, within our property boundaries. Is that correct?
Yeah, Jeff, I think, so we can condition. So if, if the board's going to approve, this is a great question. The board's going to approve the project. They can add a condition that, that they submit, um, you know, the applicant would submit a landscape plan that reflects, you know, a planting of some sort that is, you know, that is acceptable to you as the neighbor. I mean, this is your property. So, you know, it's always this odd dance where the applicant on an adjoining property is doing something on an Abutter's property. And it happens, you know, every so often. So I think that your approval would be to, to, from my perspective, at least pretty essential here. So, um, you know, uh, we can certainly condition it that way. If that's acceptable to you, um, our peer review is not going to necessarily opine on the best possible planting there. But we can also ask the applicant to submit a revised plan, you know, to the community planning department, which is really Emily and Mike. And they have a lot of experience looking at this and they can just, you know, verify that, you know, that there is a planting reflect on the site plan. And that is, it is appropriate for a sloped and, you know, potentially shady area. Um, if you would feel more comfortable ha- having applicant have the landscape architect, you know, write a letter or kind of submit a peer review. You know, in that sense, the applicant, uh, we're hap- you know, happy to entertain the idea of conditioning that. Um, we, we are interested in helping you have a satisfactory outcome here.
No, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity for a public hearing. And I do, I again, I want to thank Patrick again for his willingness to work with us, um, throughout this, this, this process. Again, really, again, the core of our concern was, is, is whatever we're putting in there meeting the satisfactory standard such that we would not be running into downstream issues. Obviously with a subsequent neighbor purchase of the property, um, with, with any erosion that would be again, coming from our property, but caused by the, uh, the encroachment and as part of the excavation processes laid out. So, uh, that makes sense. And, you know, we can continue that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
From the board's perspective, um, from the board's perspective, conditioning approval potentially on a revised landscape plan with a landscape architect's, uh, renderings for appropriate plantings there, subject to community planning department approval and, and obviously approval via butter. Does that, is that a satisfactory outcome? Or do you want to see another turn? I mean, that, that's something we could definitely can condition and do typically conditions. I'm comfortable with that, but.
I'm comfortable with that.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant on the project then? We want to discuss about, about the site.
Is there anything we need to discuss about the wave, requested waiver?
Thank you, Tracy. Yes. There is a requested waiver here for, um, an overhead, uh, connection, right? Where there, there's an underground connection is required. Um, you know, SAP is recommended and I'm inclined to, um, follow their lead here. There's no compelling reason for the waiver request. So I would not be inclined to grant it. I mean, it is part of our zoning requirements. The applicant, you have any, anything to, any questions or comments on that for us?
No, uh, like I said, we, you know, the project started, we were under the notion that we were under the, um, the land disturbance threshold, right? So we weren't, you know, when, when this was, when the power was installed, like that, you know, we weren't thinking, oh, it needs to go underground or anything like that. So, um, you know, here we are that, you know, now, um, I don't even know if it was a question that was even brought to my attention, to be honest with you. Um, so that's kind of just where it is. I, you know, Michael had, uh, mentioned that it's likely going to need to go underground now. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Board's perspective, I mean, that is what our bylaw requires. I don't see any real need for discussion about that unless we don't think it needs to go underground.
Hingham Light did say we'd probably need to add, uh, a pole, um, to the property, I believe. Um, cause I think the, both on the left and right side is of the property are too far away. So they would have to add a pole, um, to bring it to the property and then go underground from there.
Okay. Thank you. I, I see that here and.
Has any, you know, effect on that or not, but.
No, we, no, that, that's not uncommon where, you know, media closer to the site. Board, any, any, any thoughts on that? I think, you know, not granting that waiver makes sense and a conditioning approval to plan on, on, on submitting a revised plan to reflect that makes sense.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. Any members of the public on the call, we should speak on this project tonight? Like other members of the public, I should say. All right. I'm not seeing any. So I, I have no further questions or comments for the applicant. Um, and it seems in the board discussion, they're inclined to move this forward. Again, so site plan review. So there's a, two recommended findings and a motion, and a motion of several sub-sections. So the recommended findings are as follows, that the proposed development is conditioned by the approval will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the prospective occupants. The occupants and neighboring properties, the users of adjoining streets or highways and the welfare of the town generally. And two, that the proposed development is conditioned by the approval meets all applicable design and performance standards. And with those proposed findings, I make the following motion, that we deny their request for waiver design and performance standard under section 1I 6IH to allow for an overhead electrical communication connection or an underground connection is required. And we grant the application of Doug Keach for site plan approval under section 1I, the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single family dwelling with associated landscaping, landscaping, grading and drainage at 95 Wampatac Road in Residence District A, subject to the following conditions, and they are, uh, one through nine. And I'll read them off here. One is proof of recording. The applicant shall file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such recording. Two is a pre-construction meeting, a pre-construction review meeting with inspection of the erosion control installation and mark limits of clearing shall be required. Erosion control installation shall also extend along the slope of budding 99 Wampatac Road. Three is limits of work tree protection areas. During clearing and or construction activities, the mark limit of work should be maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. All vegetation beyond a limit of work should be retained in an undisturbed state. No stockpiling of topsoil or storage of film materials or equipment may occur within the protected area. Without limiting foregoing, protected trees to be retained shall be surrounded by temporary protective fencing or other appropriate measures before any clearing or grading occurs and maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. Protected barriers shall be large enough to encompass the critical root zone of all protected trees to be reserved. And the inspection of the protective barrier shall be required for construction vehicles. All construction vehicles shall be parked on site. No construction vehicles run to the premises before seven AM on any given construction day. Five inspections. Inspection shall be required during construction and prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy of all elements of the product related to or affecting erosion control, limits of work and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the product, including all drain piping. The planning board may require at the applicant's expense, the establishment of a consultant fee account pursuant to amounts of usage of general laws, chapter 44, section 53G to fund the cost of such inspections. Six is electrical communication connection. So prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall place electrical communication wires underground as required under section, uh, 1I 6H and submit revised plans to the community planning department to reflect this connection. Seven is landscaping. Prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a revised landscape plan to the community planning department to show, um, to proper planting of the slope along the property line and of 99 Wampatac Road as approved by the neighbor at 99 Wampatac Road and the community planning department. The applicant shall also provide an erosion control blanket in areas where the slope exceeds three to one. Eight is an Aspel Plan requirement. Upon project completion, the Aspel Plan must be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy and in no event later than two years after the completion of construction. Positions such as other requirements as are imposed by the building commissioner, the Aspel Plan must demonstrate substantial performance with a stormwater system design and performance standards of the approved project plans. And nine is maintenance of protected trees. Each protected tree retained and all new trees planted to mitigate their removal, any protected trees shall be maintained in good health for a period of no less than 24 months from the date of final inspection or issuing such a certificate of occupancy if applicable. Should such trees die or be removed within such 24 month period, the owner of the property shall be required to replace such tree or trees consistent with the requirements for the nine months from the death or removal of such protected tree or new tree.
Okay.
Thank you, Rita. Quick roll call vote. Mike, did you have a comment there before I?
Oh, no, sorry. I was just scratching my.
No problem. Just have to pick you up. Um, a quick roll call vote on that second in motion, uh, Tracy Schreiber.
Hi.
Gary Tondarkic.
Hi.
Gordon Carr.
Hi.
Rita De Silva.
Hi.
And I might as well. Best of luck to the applicant. Jeff, thank you for your comments. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. That, those are the two permitting hearings you have any against tonight. Now we're going to move into a zoning articles discussion. I think we have here on the agenda, three, uh, zoning articles for discussion. The first we'll discuss is the MBTA communities multi-family housing. Um, the second is the brew pub, brewery, winery, distillery use. And the third is, um, the abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming conditions. I'll start by opening, um, for discussion, MBTA communities multi-family housing. This is our second hearing, uh, of recent ilk on this, and I think our eighth or ninth hearing overall, MBTA communities multi-family housing. Uh, we had a lot of public participation last time. It looks like there's several people, the public on the call tonight that are looking to participate. So we welcome that. Um, what we asked staff to do after the last meeting, what I asked after, after the last meeting was to go back and, um, I'll defer to Emily and Michael here and kind of leading this, but, um, take a look and, and go through the, with the board more substantively, the process that the study committee underwent, um, looking at some of the specific parcels, kind of a, a more structured review of the law. And then kind of go forward with us with some potential options that we can consider for, um, considering your parcels or considering changes to kind of the current parcels. And how we'll kind of lead what we have as a board to do that and creating this. So, um, my understanding and some, some of this is that, uh, Emily's just pulled it up here. So I'm going to turn it over to you. I hope I introduced that correctly. Um, for members of the public on the call tonight, um, we're going to go through this presentation. What I'd like to do is for the board to discuss this presentation. And I mean, you're obviously more than welcome to witness the deliberation and the talking, but, um, you know, my intent is to kind of lead a board discussion or foster board discussion on this and, um, really drill down on the presentation and on some of the alternate sites and, and the process and the model. And obviously we welcome your public comment. Um, um, but I, I plan to take it, I think, after that discussion. Um, and it'll inform parts of the continuing discussion for the board, but I just want to set expectations there. But I'd like to have that presentation, the board discussion first and the public comment to follow that. I'm cognizant of the time, it's seven forty-five. Um, you know, we, we don't have a hard stop, but, um, I think we tend to kind of wane as it gets closer to 10 o'clock-ish. Um, especially with the late Super Bowl last night. So, uh, my hope is that we wrap up discussion on the communities act, discussion in and around nine-ish or so, so we can have, give ample time and consideration for the other few articles and go from there. So with that, I will stop talking. Emily, please go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you, Kevin. Great introduction. Um, as always, uh, the agenda before you is more or less what you, um, just mapped out. So a quick summary, we won't belabor this, but just what is the law? Um, i- in the event there's anybody new to this process, um, on the meeting, uh, we'll quickly review the impacts of non-compliance, as you noted, the, um, local process, um, including details of the analysis completed by the working group, um, and potential responses to, um, concerns, uh, related to, you know, items that have been raised by both the public and board members. And then as you noted, board discussion, public comment, and then we'll discuss, um, next steps as appropriate. Um, so the summary, um, you see here before you, uh, to review, um, the 2021 state law requires that communities create zoning capacity, not necessarily production of, um, multi-family housing. So section 3A of chapter 40A, which is the zoning act, now requires that, um, an MBTA community shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size, and we'll revisit that, um, term, um, in which multi-family housing is permitted by right and, you know, meets these other bulleted, um, standards. Uh, the first, that there's a minimum density of at least 15 units per acre overall in the district, um, that the district be not more than a half mile from public transportation. There be no age restrictions. So we can't just create multi-family senior housing, for instance, um, or dormitories, uh, for children. Um, and it be suitable for, uh, families with children. Um, that includes that there be no limitations on the, the number of bedrooms. Um, the statute enabled what was then the Department of Housing and Community Development, and now is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It's, the, the department's been rebranded sort of, um, to issue guidelines that build on the, the statute requirements, um, to ensure that communities comply. So the, um, the state, that, that department issued draft guidelines in early, um, 2022. Uh, they were finalized in August of 2022. And the guidelines introduce a number of new concepts, um, some of which are, I, I believe intended to, um, define some of the terms in the statute. Um, that first one is the reasonable size reference. There are two standards in the guidelines about what would be reasonable. Um, the first is a minimum land area, which is, um, loosely based on, uh, percentage of the radius around a transit station. So 10% of that area would be 50 acres. So that's kind of the first rule of thumb. Um, the other is a minimum unit capacity so that the district has to produce, um, again, zoning capacity of a certain number, um, or percentage of a community's year, or excuse me, housing units as of 2020. Um, and, and the percentage varies based on the community category. So, um, MBTA communities with rapid transit stations, um, are required to produce more than commuter rail communities, um, or bus station communities or, um, adjacent communities. So that, that just gives you a sense of some of the, um, the constructs that were introduced in the guidelines. Um, the impact of non-compliance, uh, seems to be growing and growing. So while it is a state mandate, it is the law, um, the, the statute also impose certain, um, penalties if a community fails to adopt, uh, the by right multi-family, uh, zoning district. Um, according to the statute, there were, um, three initial programs affected. The housing choice program, Mass Works, um, and then the local capital projects fund, which really, um, flows to housing authorities as opposed to municipalities. Um, more recently, uh, housing works, um, program was created and that also, um, i- if you didn't comply, you would no longer be eligible. Um, the, um, the state also in its discretion introduced, um, 13 other programs that would be affected. You can see the list there. Um, you know, some of those, the Hingham at least probably, you know, wouldn't be, um, accessing, such as the rural and small town development fund, um, but others we, we have accessed. Um, and then further, there's a general statement that determine, uh, determinations of compliance may also inform any other funding decision by the Executive Office of Economic Development, the Housing and Livable Communities Department, the MBTA and other state agencies, um, when they're looking at discretionary, um, funding decisions. So, um, just to give you a sense of the impact financially on the town, uh, were we not to achieve compliance? Uh, last year, Hingham accessed somewhere around a million dollars, um, in both the, the statutory, um, programs and the discretionary programs that would be at risk funding from the state, basically. Um, we did a poll of departments to get a sense as to how much, you know, we hope to access or at least apply for, um, in the coming year. And, and that was north of $10 million. Um, so it's not insignificant. Um, and then, uh, more recently, the governor also mentioned this, this. And then more recently, the governor also mentioned this this program is not on the list, but that school funding through the MSBA may also be on the table. And, you know, as you know, we're rebuilding a elementary school right now, in part with that funding. And then finally, there was a threat made by the Attorney General this past March that said MBTA communities cannot avoid their obligations under the law by foregoing this type of funding. And the advisory cautioned that communities that fail to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action. And they're also at risk potentially of liability under federal and state fair housing laws. So that's kind of the the stick that is being swung by the state in this this mandate. Locally, there's been an ongoing public process related to compliance. In the 2022 to 2023 time period, there were three joint select board and planning board public meetings, as well as two additional planning board public meetings to discuss next steps. In fall of 2023, the planning board held three public meetings to review draft zoning regulations. This January, we held three public hearings. This is actually the fourth substantive session of of the ongoing hearing. There's been some other outreach to interested community groups, as well as owners of parcels that may be rezoned. For anybody who had noticed, the League of Women Voters was scheduled to hold a regional forum at Town Hall tomorrow. I'll just let you know, it sounds like that's being rescheduled based on the weather forecast. Town Hall is expected to be closed tomorrow. So we'll, you know, we'll make sure that that's on on the calendar in the future when we know the date. There's some other resources we've accessed to try to demonstrate compliance. One was through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. We got a technical assistance grant to engage Bowler Engineering to draft the compliance model that the state requires, which is a rather complex Excel file that with various inputs that generates the, you know, the number of acres that are eligible for inclusion. And the number of units that your zoning would be expected to produce capacity for. We also got a housing choice grant that's ongoing right now and engaged RKG to complete an economic feasibility analysis so that we could potentially justify a higher level of inclusionary zoning or affordable units as a component of any potential future project. There'll be more public sessions in the coming weeks. We'll talk about, you know, the schedule and next steps towards the end of the hearing. And we've been trying to blast out on, you know, the Facebook, the towns Facebook pages and the community calendar, these hearings so that everybody's informed. And then we also will be submitting an informal application to the HLC for potential approval before town meeting. Or informal approval before town meeting. Here are the, you know, the the starting point. These are five transit station areas that fall at least partially in Hingham. You can see two of them. The actual station is just outside our bounds. The first is East Wameth, the second Cohasset. We also obviously have the Hingham Ferry and then the West Hingham and Nantasket Junction commuter rail stations. In the past, public hearings, when we've shown this slide, I've discussed some of the constraints that you can see visually represented here. But we intend to go into much more detail on those in further slides. So, you know, to the extent that you've heard that before, we'll skip over it for now. And let you know, instead, the analysis that the working group undertook in arriving at the district that is right now proposed in the pending zoning article. Just so you know, the working group was a point reviewed by the planning board, the makeup, and approved by the select board in the state's required action plan last January, so just over a year ago. The membership includes myself, Mike Silvera, the senior planner, a former planner, conservation officer, and GIS coordinator, Lonnie Fornier. And then our real estate counsel, Susan Murphy, also a former member of this board. So a number of planners. And what we tried to do is drill down first into all the state requirements. So you can see the numbers that we had to hit in this chart. These are the specifics imposed by the state for Hingham. Those requirements include that only a portion of our district be located within that half mile radius of a transit station. So for Hingham, based on our developable station area, that's one of the inputs into this chart. Only seventy five percent of the district has to be located within a half mile. Another up to twenty five percent can be located anywhere in town. In trying to meet the the size requirements, there are other considerations that the state imposes on communities. The first, we've mentioned that there be at least fifty acres in the district overall. You can have multiple districts or sub-districts, but one of those must must consist of at least twenty five contiguous acres. And any other districts can be not less than five acres. And then excluded from developable land, which is, you know, the denominator in our our minimum unit capacity. We cannot include any publicly owned land, streets, right of ways, wetland resource areas, and certain institutional properties such as private schools and utilities. So those are some of the constraints that we started with. The working group considered some more locally imposed considerations, largely based on, you know, planning principles, and then some of our guiding planning documents and, you know, the goals of of those. So locally, we thought it important to incorporate all of the existing multifamily locations that are close to transit that Hingham has actually produced multifamily housing in. It wasn't produced by right. Instead, it was either through a special permit or a comprehensive permit, but in many ways, that housing that's already on the ground really fulfills the spirit of the law. So that was where we looked first. Beyond that, we looked to encourage residential uses in residential districts through conversion of non-conforming and potentially inappropriate uses. So we wanted to cite multifamily housing, where housing already is. We also hoped to preserve properties that are zoned for business, commercial, and industrial uses. And we will talk a little bit more about why we did that on further slides. We considered wastewater capacity in particular areas, either through existing sewer districts and the infrastructure that serves that. Or, you know, the ability to handle wastewater on site. That is something that the state doesn't necessarily mandate. They do encourage that communities consider it. We also considered other environmental or local sensitivities, including areas of critical environmental concern, flood plain, future effects of sea level rise, and the presence of historic assets. So, you know, this is what was guided us. The right side, or excuse me, the left side of your screen. Those are the things we have to consider, or else the state will, you know, not find us to be in compliance. On the right side, these are considerations that, you know, we chose to look at, but we recognize that, you know, others may not prioritize items quite the same way we did. So the one other thing that we've heard suggested is that the town consider a mixed use option. This is not something we did first, in part because the select board and the planning board, when we presented the recommended district back in July, this wasn't necessarily an option. The state had not yet issued guidelines related to mixed use districts that comply with MBTA community zoning. They did later that that summer in late August of 2023. They amended the guidelines to allow a mixed use option, but with a number of limitations. The first that is most important is that the area or sub-district that requires mixed use would not count towards that fifty acre minimum land area requirement. They do allow, however, that units zoned for within a mixed use district could partially offset the minimum unit capacity of up to twenty five percent of the district, only if the mixed use zoning met all of these other requirements. So some of them are similar to, you know, the overall guidelines. I think I would like to draw attention to the last bullet that your zoning could not require a minimum parking requirement for the commercial component of a mixed use district. So it seems much more oriented towards the rapid transit communities where it's probably more realistic that residents may not have vehicles or be generating a demand on site and therefore wouldn't be in conflict with the demand generated by commercial use on the same property. Outside of the downtown, that's not necessarily something that seems practical in Hingham. And even in the downtown where there isn't public transit within a half mile. You know, we we do allow commercial residential buildings, potentially with some component of off-site parking, but only if secured by a lease or through an established public program. So it didn't seem to be a great fit for Hingham for a variety of reasons. None of the alternate alternate sites that we looked to included a mixed use component for those reasons. So where we settled principally, because this is where most of our multifamily housing is already located, is largely around the Hingham Ferry, about eighty five percent of the proposed district, you can see outlined in red here. Much of it is part of the shipyard redevelopment area with two exceptions. There is an Avalon property that's at three nineteen Lincoln Street that was developed outside of that development area through a comprehensive permit. And then the other is on the south side of Beale Street and just falls within our transit area because the half mile radius touches its frontage. That's the Cove Development and also was built out via comprehensive permit. Those areas don't quite hit our fifty acre minimum, so we started to look outside of a transit area proper. And but still ideally proximate to transit. So the the sub-district that would qualify under the twenty five percent allowed area outside of a transit station or transit area is represented here. It's off of French Street and just outside the half mile radius of the East Wameth commuter rail station. Potential locations that the working group also considered, you saw go out on the notice of this meeting. Here's the list. We're going to go through these one by one. But I just want to note on this slide that, you know, the first several are are they do qualify as transit area. So those would be eligible towards our minimum seventy five percent of the district. The last three options are not proximate to transit, and they would have to be eligible under the twenty five percent limitation. So the first is the Selectman's Parcel at two Beale Street. We looked at this one in part because town meeting in the past has expressed some interest in using this property for housing. That was quite some time ago, never quite got off the ground. And now, under the state regulations, is not considered eligible to be included in the district because it is publicly owned. So while there's thirteen point five acres there and much of it is uplands, it is a hundred percent excluded land. So we didn't really consider this one much further beyond that. The next property we look to is a non-residential property on Justice Cushing Way, Route three A. It is located in the Nantasket Junction Station area. It meets the minimum five acre requirement to be its own sub-district. It actually has seven point five acres of developable land. It's fifteen point six acres overall. And it was considered positive that this, you know, inclusion could potentially encourage the conversion of a non-residential use in the Residence C District to a residential use. On the con side, a significant amount of the property is excluded land. It's, you know, over half of it is wetlands. There's five point three acres of sensitive land flood plain. We note that there is no remaining capacity in the Weir River Sewer District. And we have concerns about the ability to treat wastewater on site. That's in part because, and you'll see this noted on the slide, that sewer district was created to resolve ongoing and worsening water pollution of the Weir River watershed area that's caused by failing septic systems of the homes within and adjacent to the watershed area. The, we also looked at future risk from flooding, from sea level rise. This part of town around Foundry Pond was identified as at risk of significant transition from high marsh to low marsh, loss of major uplands and connection of various marsh regions along the Weir River by the 2015 Climate Change and Adaptation Report prepared by Kleinfeldter. And then additionally, there are three potential vernal pools located on site. That resource area comes with even greater buffers under our local wetland regulations. Finally, what's important to note about this one is that the assessor's office lists one sixteen Justice Cushing Way as vacant and unbuildable. And that is an input that would have to go into the compliance model. So there's a risk that the state would not approve that. The next property we look to is also a non-conforming use in the Nantasket Junction Station area. This is a single parcel located on Rockland Street. The pros are that it meets the five acre land area requirement. It's almost eleven acres overall. Seven point one is developable, and again, encourages the conversion of a non-residential use to residential use in Residence C District. The cons include a significant portion, again, of excluded land consisting of water, wetlands, and Title V buffers. And that to get to the developable portion of the site, it would require a wetlands crossing. There's additionally two point four acres of sensitive land. This property has the same concerns as the last one we looked at about sewer capacity. It also, this area of town, again, it's very It also, this area of town, again, it's very close to Foundry Pond. But that Climate Change and Adaptation Report further notes that Rockland Street is the number-one most-at-risk roadway from flooding under, you know, present and future conditions. And then finally, the front third or so of the site is all in an area of critical environmental concern. The next property, also located within the Nantasket Junction Station area. You can see on the screen, there's a lot highlighted and read here, and I apologize for that. This is the Chief Justice Cushing property we talked about initially. Here is the Rockland Street property that we just spoke to. And then three parcels were considered for inclusion that either, you know, a portion, a significant portion of, or a very small portion of, fall within the Nantasket Junction Station area. These highlighted properties out here, the state said we could not include as station area because they just stretched too far out, even though they're under common ownership. Anyways, this one, again, meets the five-acre minimum to be a sub-district. It's actually 14.9 acres. The cons, again, there's some portion of excluded land, also sensitive land floodplain, and in this case, also priority habitat. We have the same sewer capacity concerns and, you know, soil condition concerns related to on-site wastewater. Similar to the last two, we have concerns about increased future risk from flooding. I had noted on the last slide that Rockland Street is identified as the number-one most-at-risk roadway, and these properties front on that. The image on the top right-hand corner of the slide actually is a projection of George Washington Boulevard, so just to the other side of the property in 2017. There's also a potential vernal pool identified on this lot that, again, comes with some additional constraints under local wetland regulations. So we then looked back to the Hingham Ferry area. There are a few properties on Beale Street that could potentially serve as a portion of our multifamily zoning district. The benefits are that these two, and this again, this one is at the corner of Beale Street and Sergeant William B. Terry Way. This is an assisted living facility presently. This is Hancock Shoe. The combined parcels meet the five-acre land area requirement. It's 7.5 acres total. There is capacity in the MWRA Sewer District. There is no excluded or sensitive land. And, you know, this area, as we know, is close to services, retail, recreation, restaurants. So it's, you know, it's a convenient location for people to live. The cons, again, it's that it would encourage the conversion of industrial and limited industrial zone land to a residential use. We just note that the 2021 Hingham Master Plan reports that only roughly 12% of the town's land area is commercial or industrial. And then, you know, there's a sense that this part of town may already be overburdened just within the half-mile radius of the Hingham Ferry. So just in this view, there's already approximately 950 multifamily housing units, either in the shipyard or on the Beale Street corridor. That's not even counting Hingham Woods or Beale's Cove Village because they fall just outside of the radius. That adds another 475 multifamily units right in this kind of compressed area. Then also within the Hingham Ferry Station area, we considered some other commercial properties along Route 3A proper, Lincoln Street, directly across from this Dunkin' Donuts. And then the more recent Avalon Development. There are some smaller businesses on smaller parcels. The benefit of this potential sub-district or incorporation of these parcels into the principal district are that it's in a transit area, meets the minimum five acres, or just over at 5.7. Again, MWRA sewer capacity, no excluded or sensitive land. And like the last property we looked at, it's conveniently located. The cons we considered are that it, again, encourages the conversion of industrial and business-owned land to a residential use. I noted, you know, the last property that we've already produced quite a bit of multifamily housing in this immediate area. And then the lot sizes and shape, because some of these properties in particular are very narrow or not deep, would likely force multifamily housing right on a very busy street. That may not be an ideal place to locate family-friendly housing. And it also could have a significant, well, could have an impact on a major gateway to the town. I'll note that the master plan includes a recommendation that we target the commercial areas in the north and south gateways of Hingham for future economic development that will further diversify tax revenues. So there seems to be some guiding documents that would discourage multifamily housing in this type of a location.
No, excuse me.
Oh, sure.
Wouldn't housing have tax revenue?
It would. Yep, the general rule of thumb, though, is that housing also places greater demands on our services. So it in some ways can, it can be a negative impact on our tax base. Just next door to that small strip at 175 Beale Street is the Talbot's headquarters. We have looked at that. It has the same, pretty much the same pros as the last few that we just looked at. It most definitely meets the five-acre minimum land area. It's just under 40 acres or so. The cons, I guess the one I, you know, that we haven't really touched on already on other properties is that it has a really large lot size compared to the last handful that we looked at. The state's compliance model does not allow you to split lots with the zoning bounds. So and you can see a little diagram here where they're telling you that that they're saying you are not allowed to split this lot here. It just will not work in the compliance model. So if all of that 39 acres were to be rezoned, and every time we did this analysis, we just assumed at the 15-unit-per-acre requirement or goal overall for the district, this parcel alone could yield another close to 600 units, so more than 580 in an area that we just discussed already has north of 1,400 units, you know, just on the Beale Street corridor, or really just on the west side of the Beale Street corridor and, you know, in the Hingham Shipyard area. Also in the Hingham Ferry Station area, we looked at 29 Shipyard Drive. It right now serves as a parking lot directly across from the ferry terminal. So this is the closest parcel that we that we looked at outside of, you know, where we've already built multifamily housing. It has same similar positive aspects. The most significant con here is that it's too small to meet the five-acre land area requirement as a standalone sub-district. And even if it were to be incorporated into the other proposed sub-districts in the shipyard redevelopment area, it wouldn't get us to the overall district size of 50 acres. We also considered things like the loss of parking for the ferry and the shipyard retail center. And then similar to that 3A commercial strip, we just note that this lot is pretty narrow and it would result in housing that is very close to and because, you know, mixed use is not proposed at street level, which has the potential to deactivate the commercial streetscape of the shipyard proper and also may not be as family-friendly because that's a busier part of the street there. Okay, moving into another station area. We looked at this triangular-shaped parcel. It actually is a part of the Cohasset Golf Club. It is addressed to Zero East Street. But you can see it falls primarily within the Cohasset Station area. So and it meets the five-acre minimum. It's 9.7 acres overall, 6.7 of which is developable. The most significant con here is that it has no frontage. This right here is actually the train tracks. So the the train, you know, separates it from East Street proper. So despite its address, there actually is no access to East Street or any other land in Hingham. And then also the, almost the entirety of the site is sensitive land. About 90% of it is either floodplain or floodway and like others that we've looked at in this portion of town has risk from flooding, both presently and in the future. So this one seemed like it would not be eligible primarily because of the frontage and access issues. We then, we're moving along. We're getting to areas that are outside of station areas. So the first is the A.W. Perry property off of Abington Street and Commerce Road. It most definitely meets the five-acre minimum for a sub-district. It actually consists of 155 acres overall. The cons are in part related to that size. The land area exceeds 25% of the proposed district's station area. So it would require, if this were incorporated, again, because you can't do a partial lot or a rezone a portion of it, that we find significant amounts of additional station area to offset this to be eligible as our nonstation area. Even though it's 155 acres overall, 90 acres of that is excluded. So it, you know, there's significant amounts of wetlands and other sensitive areas that can't be included. It encourages, again, the conversion, well, of vacant industrial land to residential use, which really undermines many longstanding development goals for this area of town that are laid out, you know, as recently as in the master plan, the South Hingham Study Group Report, and a number of legislative actions taken by Town Meeting, one of which was to create a sewer district in South Hingham to encourage more active commercial and industrial use of this area. That actually was seen as a con in part because the sewer district has no infrastructure in it and therefore no capacity to to service any future growth, whether it's commercial or residential. Based on the large lot size and, again, the limitation to split lots, that this parcel on its own could yield more than 980 units with the 15-unit-per-acre zoning on developable land or 2,300 on the land overall, based on its total size. And we'd also note that Rockland is considering a couple of options to achieve compliance with their MBTA zoning requirements. But one of them includes A.W. Perry property just on the other side of the municipal bounds. And it sounded like they were going to zone for somewhere around 850 units right there. So it seemed like that would, you know, in combination, sort of overburden, you know, this region and particularly the roadway infrastructure around it. And then finally, housing in the middle of an industrial park may not be considered very family-friendly. And I think the EAG had made that comment on another nearby community's location. Excuse me. We also looked, again, this is outside of station area, but at some commercial properties up on Route 53. The this pocket right here, right at the corner of Main Street and Whiting Street, this is Queen Anne's Corner. This is the Scarlet Oak. This is the gas station property that the board reviewed just a couple of years ago. It does meet the minimum five acres, just barely. It's 5.3. 6.8 overall, but 5.3 developable. And it would fall within the, unlike the last property we looked at, it falls within the 25% limitation that's located out of a station area. That being said, it's about as far away from public transit as you can get. Again, encourages actively used commercial properties to residential use. This is a sensitive area. All of it is located in a surface water supply protection area. This is Apron Pond right over here. This one's a little bit unusual. It also, we thought it was a negative that the properties have multiple assets listed on the historical inventory, but they're not in a historic district. So demo delay could apply to these, but if the developer chose to wait that out, we could put at risk, you know, our historic assets on this, you know, important streetscape, which is, again, a major gateway to the town. And I had mentioned this quote on another slide, but, you know, we're supposed to be encouraging more economic development along these gateway areas. And then finally, we looked to French Street. So the working group had moved away from those alternate locations. But for the reasons we reviewed a number of slides ago before we went through each individual alternate site, we ended up landing on the French Street property. It meets the five-acre minimum. It's 8.3 acres of developable land and it falls within the 25% limitation that is located outside of a transit area. But this is really barely outside of a transit area. It's about 0.6 miles from East Wamouth as opposed to 0.5 and approximately 0.8 from the West Hingham commuter rail station. I'll note that the distance between this site, just based on its orientation, and this this radius is equal to the distance between the back building at the Cove on Beale Street and the Hingham Ferry. And that's because that property is oriented perpendicular to the roadway as opposed to, you know, parallel to it. We thought it was a benefit that, you know, the zoning could encourage the conversion of a nonconforming contractor's yard or nonresidential use to a residential use in Residence B District. It could potentially encourage the environmental remediation of this previously disturbed site. I think we've talked about the history of it before. And the soils in this area are soon to be able to accommodate on-site wastewater disposal. It was previously used as a sand and gravel pit. And I'll note that the Housing Trust, just within the last couple of months, did soil investigations just over here on a tax titled property. And they were found to be adequate there, which is, it's a stone's throw from the site. The cons, it would increase the density allowed in the underlying district, although I guess I probably could have put that con on every one of these options. And then we've heard that there- And then we've heard that there, you know, there are a number of neighborhood concerns. So I guess in part to address some of the concerns that were raised at prior hearings, we thought it might be worth just reviewing, you know, a couple of points. Again, and we've said this before, the state mandate is just to create zoning capacity. It it's not housing production. So we don't know when or if an actual project would materialize. But if it were ever in the future, if this property got rezoned or any of the other ones got rezoned, multifamily housing, as a reminder, has to comply with all state and local regulations, including those of the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health. That this zoning is is not the same as a forty B, where they can get one stop shopping waivers from the zoning board of appeals from any local regulation. By right, multifamily housing has to comply with with all rules, including those imposed in the zoning bylaws. So for those of you that have looked at the article in any detail, you see that there are proposed setbacks, lot area, frontage requirements. A a project would not be eligible for site plan approval unless they also complied with all those standards. And then finally, review of any potential multifamily housing development would be subject to site plan review standards. Those standards, for anyone who's been on the call, you you heard the board apply those to much smaller projects, but they they govern important issues like stormwater treatment and management, traffic impacts. One of one of the design and performance standards that the board looks at related to traffic is that the project has to provide for offsite improvements to offset the predicted impact of the development on transportation infrastructure. So it's just, it's not just parking and the onsite circulation, but also pedestrian connectivity and, you know, vehicle counts on the surrounding roadway network. The board looks at outdoor lighting to ensure that it's, you know, consistent with the neighborhood. It doesn't spill onto adjacent sites. They look at landscaping and tree preservation, architectural design elements and whether the project is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And then approval often includes conditions that are intended to mitigate impacts on the neighborhood. Additional zoning modifications that this board could consider are bulleted here. So, you know, as I mentioned, there are certain dimensional requirements that are proposed in the pending article. Many of those you could vary. One option is to reduce the size of the district overall. We do have a little bit of wiggle room. The proposed district is about fifty seven acres. Fifty three of that is developable, so you have the ability to to narrow it down a little bit. You could potentially reduce the allowed density in some of the sub districts that may require upzoning in other sub districts, but it is an option on the table. So some sub districts can allow for less than fifteen units per acre as long as the district overall provides for an average of fifteen units per acre. And we can still hit that minimum unit capacity number, the one thousand four hundred ninety units overall. So, you know, there might be an inability to trade off between sub districts. And then you could consider increasing setbacks and or landscaping requirements to better buffer multifamily from surrounding development, whatever that may be. You could potentially restrict the form of multifamily housing to smaller scale, three bedroom, not three bedrooms, don't do that. Three family houses or smaller multifamily structures and or add more explicit architectural requirements in the bylaw to give folks some assurance that, you know, that what what could be proposed in the future would have to comply with really robust standards. So those are things to consider. And that concludes our presentation, but we're happy to hear questions from the board if they come up or just listen to your discussion, Kevin.
Thank you, Emily. Very thorough. Thank you very much. Note it's eight thirty seven, so it might might be going a little later, and that's perfectly fine. So I don't have an agenda, you know, kind of using my colleagues and the board. I just want to make sure that we had the opportunity to see this, you know, to want to understand just what the what the study group went through and and what it's done and what parts we've seen before. Some information's a bit new to us, some of the, I think, the zoning changes. We haven't really discussed as a board before. So we can break this conversation down in a couple of ways. One is to think about. Let's think about the objective for the night. So the objective for the night should be to decide if we'd like to explore another district. And if we'd like to, what district that is. I think I'm gonna ask Emily or I think Susan might be on the call, we'll spend the timing. But given some of the constraints on time, you really do need to move that forward tonight because there's going to have to be published notices and whatnot. So if that isn't addressed to the board, that has to happen tonight. So we need to identify that district and we need to vote on moving it forward. Other things we might want to talk about tonight are adjustments we'd like to see to any of the current proposed zoning districts and whether or not we want to break out, you know, those districts. So we see changes, you know, for instance, the French Street one, kind of quote unquote down zoning it, if that's the right term, to add some of the, you know, the discussion from that last slide and how that might impact other districts. Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we want to do that, we can also talk about isolating the French Street parcel from the kind of creating a new sub district, essentially isolating it in its own sub district. So that's another thing we should talk about is, do we want to isolate, quote unquote, the French Street proposal in its own sub district? One, so we can keep the zoning there and just impact that sub district and then see and then play with the impacts in the other sub districts. But two, if we're looking at another district, can we, do we want to think about swapping it with the French Street, you know, parcel? Essentially, so it's kind of more of a one for one swap as opposed to saying, well, if you look at this other district, how would it affect the shipyard? So trying to make this a little more manageable, like isolating that parcel? That might not be what we want to do, but that should be something we discuss tonight. And I think that would be a pretty thorough discussion. And obviously, with the public on the call, we're welcome their comments. So that would be, I think, my goals for the night and the objectives I have in discussing this. I opened it up to board discussion then, you know, along those lines. Rita, please go ahead.
Sure. So I've kind of talked to Emily and Michael, and I think you're well aware that I'm not for the French Street area because I think it's a family residential zone. And I'd like to explore the Lincoln Street area that was mentioned. And I know you said there was some industrial there, Emily, but I was wondering if we could kind of discuss the Lincoln Street opposed to French Street.
Sure, Rita, thank you. Let's go around to the other members of the board, talk a little bit about this, we kind of get a sense of what direction people are moving and what they're thinking. And then we can certainly, I think it makes sense, Emily, to bring that one back up just so we can take a visual look at it. I'm pulling up the slideshow on my own computer to look at it here, too. For other members of the board, those objectives make sense to you tonight and where you want to leave this this meeting? And also, you know, what else, what direction would you like the board discussion to go in in terms of discussion? I'll lay out my parameters. I mean, it makes no sense to me to discuss the parcel that doesn't meet requirements, like, for instance, doesn't give us the minimum acreage, because it doesn't really accomplish the objectives we're here to set. So I would eliminate parcels like that in my mind. It also doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense from my perspective, talk about parcels that are too large because, you know, this is like a, you know, it's it comes a bit revolving, right? The more, the larger the parcel that we discuss gets, the more we have to enlarge, especially if it's on in, it's in the twenty five percent kind of excluded area. The larger the other parcels have to get inside the seventy five percent area. And we kind of have a, you know, essentially like a circular calculation where we are expanding the number of housing units. And that might be fine, but that would be part of that discussion. So I've looked at this and saying, getting above a five acre parcel, but it's close to the minimum size parcel that we need to hit in order to hit our the minimum parcel requirements. That's one of the lenses through which I'm approaching this. And I think for me, those are two, you know, at least two high level guiding principles. I've talked a lot, so I will pass it off, Gordon. She's shaking her head. What are your thoughts or?
No, I think you 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 laid out those parameters, I think, well, right there as far as what our our options are. Going bigger creates all kinds of complications, whether it's in one of the districts or not. And I will say, as as you did, that there's was obviously an extraordinary amount of work that went into this by the by the working group operating under what I think I have said before are just unreasonable levels of restraints and requirements under the MBTA communities law. We are the planning board. Emily and Michael are planners, accomplished, trained, skilled planners. I would put up against any in the Commonwealth. This exercise is not planning, right? This exercise is a requirement to comply with something that is mandated in largely a one size fits all manner under a strict time line with very serious potential financial and legal implications. I can't think of anything further than planning than that. But it is the situation you're in. I don't say that because I'm looking for sympathy either for them or for us from people on the call, because I don't think I'll get that. But I'm trying to say that this is the task that that we must take for the entire town. And I think if we had the opportunity to to talk about multifamily zoning, absent a lot of those requirements and restrictions, which some, I think we would all agree, seem counterintuitive. This might look very different. Now, that's just my opinion. I thought I would share on what we're doing here. But Kevin is as you laid it out, as far as what our kind of decision matrix or or tradeoff analysis is, I'm looking for, looking at another potential district. I think those are right. Rita, just to confirm, you you're looking, you want to talk about the Lincoln Street. Not not the Talbot's Lincoln Street.
That area, I I will. Lincoln Street, not where there there were wetlands, I saw all that. I'm not picking up anything. It kind of seemed an open space with just some industrial stores there. I'm not sure what's there. I was gonna ask Emily, Emily, if you could tell me what was there. I just feel that, I know there's a lot in that area, but I just feel that once we start going into neighborhoods, like people don't like hearing that. But once you start going into neighborhoods, that sets the precedent down the line of other areas that are in Hangum, not in Pro Point, but in between three A and down at fifty three oh, down by Whiting Street. I feel like that sets the precedent that other other buildings, other buildings like that, multifamilies can go up. And, you know, for me, I moved to Hangum for a bedroom community. And I would like to keep that area or the area in between like a bedroom community. And that's that's how I feel.
Thanks, Rita. Tracy, Gary, you know, I really, like I said, I welcome comments, looking for kind of a discussion about what you want to talk about, if those parameters make sense and and your thoughts about how we get there. I mean, because that's a big part of this process. Gary, I think you're muted.
There we go. Thank you for the presentation. It was well thought out and very detailed and very informative. I I I see this as, you know, following up on what Gordon was saying. We're really in a statistical exercise here. We have an equation that requires fourteen hundred and ninety units be produced under a certain, all the stated constraints. We have a little flexibility here in that the compliance model indicates a potential for about fifteen hundred and forty units. So there is some some flexibility and contingency here. I look at this as, you know, we've talked about numbers. We've talked about their prescriptive requirements. One of the things that I'd like to talk about is some of the objectives of this of this initiative, which are to basically foster community, to provide more housing near public transportation, housing that's near amenity rich facilities. And some of the more qualitative aspects of this, one of which is character and density. You know, we are working on the precedent here that we have permitted a lot of units in the last five or 10 years, fifteen years in Hangum. We've permitted close to, I don't know, thirteen hundred plus units of housing through inclusionary zoning or forty B or what have you. So we've done quite a bit. In doing that, we've also created a precedent in the town as to where we put different densities of housing. And housing that's not only affordable, but housing that's quality and housing that is close to public transportation and housing that's close to amenities such as stores and entertainment and theaters and what have you. So I look at this as kind of proceeding along a path in terms of the districts where we can reinforce existing densities in existing sub district locations such as the Cove, such as Avalon and the Shipyard, such as the Avalon Townhouses. And I think that focusing in sub district, it's number three, but it's actually the sub district that's centered on the ferry. The northern half of that district is an area that's got a shipyard development, which is an overlay district that was put in place about twenty five, thirty years ago. And the goal of that was to create essentially a town, kind of a crossroad, something like a Newbury Port, something where you had pedestrian amenities and you you had amenity rich, kind of a village, large village, kind of a concept. The southern part of that circle is an area that has got some relatively low density, some commercial development, some residential development. And this is the area along Lincoln Street, which is three hundred and fifty Lincoln Street, which is the office building across from the Dunkin' Donuts, across from the shipyard, going west on Lincoln Street up towards Sergeant William Terry Boulevard. And you go down the parcels there, which would include the Bank of America, would include perhaps the Sella School Building, just as parcels does not, I'm not just not thinking about Talbot's here because Talbot's is a much larger parcel. I'm thinking that perhaps we could expand Sub District Three to include the Lincoln Street parcels. And we could also there create densities that then would scale down that could better interface with the densities of the surrounding residential areas. The shipyard parcels, for example, Avalon, somewhere the 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 larger Avalon, the newer ones, I don't know, forty plus units per acre. The the Cove is probably twenty two or twenty three units per acre. Just to talk about densities, Hangum Woods is about seven to eight units per acre. If we look at the Weathervein residences, that's about five or six units per acre. If we were to look at Bradley Woods, that's like four units per acre. If we were to look at, you know, some of the single family, smaller scale residential neighborhoods, I think we could basically have a really nice scale transition. The other thing that to me is really important is is that we we have a situation here where a lot of our planning and a lot of our market research was done pre COVID. And one of the things that a number of the landowners in Hangum have found, especially in South Hingham, is is that the concept of large scale commercial development, as earlier envisioned, is no longer there in a lot of their market research. And I look at the demographics and I think, for example, of young families. We want to create housing for families with children, young couples. Well, the young couples, most of whom that I know, who are dealing with the post COVID economy, a lot of those folks work at home. A lot of those folks would be interested in small maker spaces. It's kind of a redefinition of residential. It's a redefinition of mixed use. It's a redefinition of what we do to support the shipyard. Because currently, the shipyard residential uses are doing very well. And they have housing at the street level and it all works fine. The retail uses, however, are not doing well. So I think in terms of economic development and revenue streams, I think we should also, that's another reason to focus on the Lincoln Street area because we could strengthen the shipyard. We have institutional uses going in the new police and fire headquarters. That's a primary economic change. The new police and fire headquarters, that's a primary economic generator. Residential is a primary economic generator. Retail is a service industry that feeds off that. And it seems to me that real commercial development in the town moving forward post-COVID, I think is mixed use, and I think it takes advantage of some of the amenity-rich areas we have in the shipyard. Um, relative to locating um housing in the other part of Sub District Three that was proposed, uh, which is the French Street Sub District, um, it just seems to me that to, to, to propose eighteen units, dwelling units per acre. On a parcel, it's eight acres or so. Um, in a neighborhood that's fundamentally two, one or two units per acre, a neighborhood that has a, a range of housing, smaller-scale, freestanding buildings. Um, a lot of those houses are small two-bedroom houses, three-bedroom houses. It's an area of Hangum, like a lot of the old byways, where a lot of the smaller houses are reachable by people starting out or people downsizing. It just seems to me to impose a really high density in an area that doesn't really have any of the supports for it. It would be completely car-dependent. Um, in a neighborhood that's, that's really uh, just in terms of, of physical character, it's, it's single buildings with yards and a residential neighborhood. Um, if, my sense would be if we were looking at something of future use down there, I would suggest a Bradley Woods, or I would suggest a Bradley Park kind of an approach. Um, not an urban, you know, that's three, that's three units, two, three units per acre. Not eighteen units per acre, which to me is sort of an urban, you know, it meets, might meet the statistical parameters of this exercise, but doesn't really meet the planning aspects of what, you know, this is a requirement. We have to programmatically deal with this. But let's do it in a way that meets the character of the town and also provides the kind of economic opportunity that we could focus on, you know, homeownership equity, do it in an area where that, the density uh precedent has already been set, which would I think be a quality uh planning approach um to, and also meet this criteria. So I would say, you know, like a long story short, I would support focusing on Sub District Three by the Shipyard, Lincoln Street, Beale Street. Um, and might, you know, do some slight fine-tuning of upzoning in the Shipyard. Upzoning not to basically give developers an incentive to change the the character of the existing buildings and maybe remove some of the forty B units. Don't, don't put a construct in that suggests that or encourages that. But do it in a way where we can then put a little bit less pressure on some of the surrounding areas of lesser density. And, and use this as an opportunity to create some quality neighborhoods um in housing that's affordable and um also contributes to the, the economy of the town.
Thanks, Gary.
Welcome.
Thank you. Tracy, I won't play on the spot, but if, if you have anything that you want to add here, thoughts you want to share with the board, please go ahead.
Uh, I don't think I have too much to add. I think Gary's approach of um or idea of potentially upsizing some of the shipyard, you know, existing parcels is an interesting idea to maybe get the um you, you know, units per acre down in, in this last piece that we need to put. Does that work, Emily? Is that?
Um, yeah, it does. Um, and I've run some draft models uh to do that in French Street. Um, it, it would, uh, what I penciled in was upzoning um Sub District One, which includes Avalon Two and um Hewitt's Landing to forty-two acres per unit, but we could then bring um French Street potentially down to like eight to ten units per acre.
Need five acres, no matter what, right?
Yeah, we need approximately five acres. Another option would be to remove from the French Street Sub District. The two, they're addressed Fort Hill. Um, they really back up to the train tracks um and are primarily wet. Uh, they had a teeny bit of upland, so we, we put them in the district, but we could, we could eliminate those, I believe.
What's the acreage on those two, Emily? Roughly?
Yeah, but I, I think it's less than two acres. Um, none of it produced units. Um, and none of it counted towards our developable land, so even if it's a little over two, they, they can come out.
Emily, in terms of the components model, we basically only need sixty units. We don't need a hundred and twenty from what I was looking at in terms of the totals.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's as crystal clear as that, because it, it sort of, everything's but affects something else. So depending on what you do with frontage requirements, potentially open space requirements or setback requirements, those numbers could be affected. Um, FAR, we played around with a little bit last week, and you could see the effect of, you know, taking something from point eight five uh to point three five. Um, but yes, the initial final um model came out to um one thousand five hundred forty-four, so it appears we have wiggle room. There just may be a diff- you know, a number of ways of approaching that.
So you wouldn't think about Lincoln Street um over by, you have the Lincoln Street area on three A?
It, the um, it, I thi- the one we had shown that was right on three A, that consists of like Bill's Outboard, uh um Ocean Kai, the laundromat, um, tho- those are the uses over there. We, we did look at it. Um, if we went with just the fifteen-unit acre minimum, um, it would produce another eighty-six multifamily units right on three A. When I try to picture what that might look like, just across the bridge in Waymouth, past the Dunkin' Donuts and Saint Jerome's, right on three A, you know, we see some mid-rise multifamily housing that's very close to the street. Um, Avalon is, is Avalon Two at three nineteen Lincoln Street is the closest multifamily development we have to three A proper um in the Shipyard area. It's set back about a hundred feet from the roadway. Um, some of these lots are not even that deep at all.
Oh, this, this wouldn't go that far back. This wouldn't.
Yeah, they're not, they're not that deep.
But the one, the one uh positive thing about that, these small sites is that um they have residential on both sides. So you have Bradley Woods on the north side, and you've got Avalon on the north side, and then on the south side, you have Fort LeRouge.
Um, Gary, you are ignoring three A in the middle of that though, right? I mean, that's not a particularly walking residential, you know?
I, I'm just saying the one positive. I didn't say all positive. Uh, I hear you. I, I'm more interested in the Lincoln Street by General William Ter- uh, by Sergeant William Terry, that area, because that's residential. Um, and it's got varying densities. Um, and it's also uh enough setback down on Sergeant William Terry, so you're not on three A primarily. You could, you could have it primarily on Sergeant Terry and you know, it would be the same kind of exposure that you have on Beale Street for some of the other developments there on a, a byway.
Emily, can you, um, so that's not one of the, you know, the, I don't need to attend or ish um areas we looked at. And you and I talked briefly about this. So Suasquelet potentially presents some problems for us here. I just want to put that out there for the board, because it's something that I had not thought about. I mean, there are tenants that leases a building, but they are school. And what, what complication does that add?
Yeah, so private schools, they're also excluded, um, like Derby Academy or Notre Dame. Um, so I, I don't, I don't think that land area would count towards our fifty-acre minimum.
And the land area being the land area that Suasquelet occupies, or the land area being the building in which they reside?
Everything that we see from the MBTA is parcel by parcel, and, and it doesn't consider all the nuance of, you know, a multi-tenanted building or um partial district. So, I mean, we could confirm with the state, but um everything seems to be parse- it, it's all or nothing.
So Gary, I, I, I understand that, that focus, and I, there's some logic to it, certainly from my perspective too, but I, that does give me a bit of pause, because that, that well, presenting this and being disqualified doesn't really serve us very well. So, I mean, we can talk about outreach that we can do as we explore this. We have some time limitations tonight on terms of like what we need to do tonight to move things forward.
Are the parcels that are uh three fifty and three sixty Lincoln Street, what about those parcels?
Um, they're all the same parcels, so three fifty is the same as one seventy-five Sergeant William B. Terry Way. So about twelve acres, a big, big chunk.
So with French Street, what's the minimum you can do?
Well, again, it's the parcel-by-parcel constraint, but where the previous developed area is, um, it's approximately eight acres. So if we took just the contractor yard parcel and, and not the rear ones that um are largely affected by wetlands, um, that, that would work.
So if you did, if you did uh three uni- if you did four units per acre, to, how many unit could you get it down? How many units by upzoning the Shipyard parcels uh slightly?
Yep.
And I've seen that upwards, what would be the absolute minimum number of units on the French Street parcel?
Yeah, I, I was looking at eight as the absolute minimum.
So eight units per acre.
So how much would that be?
It, under, under seventy.
Yeah, so if you had, if you had eight units per acre and that density was the same as Weathervein, I'm just trying to have something that people could visualize. Eight units per acre is pretty close to Bradley Woods or Weathervein.
Yeah, or um some of the others you mentioned, like um, well, Back River, it's not that far off from that. Um, Hangum Woods, Bealsco Village.
And the difference there is that the question also then would be, within that density, you could do potentially smaller units. It wouldn't have to be eight-unit attached congregate housing, which is of a scale that's very different. It could be smaller units like that. Let's say it was a two-unit building, and you did four two-unit buildings, that's eight units. Um, or you need, well, that's per acre, so you need, you need uh thirty buildings, I guess. I don't know how it all lay out, but there's a way to do it with a smaller density building that um, you know, even, even the buildings over there at the corner of uh North Street and Beale Street. What's the name of that, that small development up the residential? It's three units attached.
Crashman Village, uh, um, Beal Street?
No, not that one. It's, it's at uh, as you turn, uh, you're at.
Yeah, the townhouse is kind of right up the road, the shared mailbox in the front.
Adams Court, Lincoln.
I can never remember the names of these condos. Um, yeah, something like Adams Court, which is two and a half story, but it's small scale, but it's three units. Um, and if you did some pretty serious setbacks, one of the other things you could do is you could do three or four units in the middle that you can't see from the street, and you could do two-unit buildings up near the street. I don't know, I'm just thinking of a way if, if of, of re- of reducing the density to a point where it's consistent.
I think those are great ideas, and if the board is inclined to explore those in advance of a continued public hearing, um, we were hoping that maybe we could create a small working group um where we could get some uh expert input from the architects on the board um with those kind of design considerations of Gary and Tracy.
But is it, is this, is this exercise getting into that level of detail and setting setbacks and?
It could. Yeah, so the compliance model, you do input setbacks, floor area ratio in the, and then the type, the type or form of housing that's allowed under the proposed zoning. Um, right now, two families, three families, smaller forms are allowed in any sub-district, but as are more traditional multifamily housing. Um, so something that, at least in this sub-district, could be as high as two and a half um stories, thirty feet in height, but there's no limitation on the massing of the, the footprint other than um through setbacks and FAR. Um, so it, it, you know, it just, we, we'd have to um, if you're interested, we'd have to modify those zoning parameters uh to still allow for the number of units that, you know, we're, we're talking about eight units per acre.
So it's basically a planned unit development with massing studies. Um. The thing is, is that Milton did a very similar kind of an exercise along Elliot Street, which is something that I, I could put out to the board or put out to the uh, the, the neighbors. Uh, it's a very interesting study that does a much, a small development. Uh, up, up, small upscaling of density, but consistent with the, the residential neighborhood fabric.
So let's put a pin in that for a second. So like, so tha- that is one of, I mean, when I started, I think that that's a worthwhile, personally, think that that's a worthwhile um um endeavor for the board. To do that, Emily, we, we, we can, and we want to, I think, carve out that parcel to look at it as a separate sub-district and separate it from its current. So that would be one action the board would take in, in advance of doing that, right? That would, that's a, well, unnecessary, but that would be an important step if you want to, you, you, you contain the impacts to that small sub-district.
Yeah, um, so we leave the other portion of that sub-district at the, the current proposal, the eighteen units per acre and all the setbacks that.
And the other portion, just to remind the board, is what?
Uh, the Cove on Beal Street.
Perfect, okay. So, I mean, it, they, they feel so disjointed, they don't belong together to some degree visually, so that, that makes some sense. Um, and then assuming the board's interested in that and, and hearing that there is interest in that, and um the other piece of our discussion should be, do we want to explore other districts? And if we do, what do we want them to be? And cognitive at the time, and I only, and I only raised that, and look, we, we have as long as we have energy, I mean, um, but logistically, we do need to, to take some larger votes tonight. Uh, we need to get staff sometime to kind of generate the language, so we can then if it is, let, let's say, Rita, we go to the Lincoln Street, which is a perfectly reasonable suggestion, and it's one of the parcels we looked at. We would need to notice those neighborhoods. They would like to, you know, no newspaper publishing and, and put it out there as well. So there should, it takes time to do that. But I think my understanding of the calendar is such that with all that noticing, that still brings us to like roughly a mid-ish March potential first hearing date on that specific parcel. One potential target process of board is the data publication for the warrant. That's March twenty-six, Emily? Okay, March twenty-six. So, I mean, that's, that's a date to work backwards from. The benefits of being in the printed warrant are that everybody, everybody in town, literally, everybody gets an email warrant. They can read it. It's there for everyone to look at. If we don't hit the printed warrant date, I mean, we can go past it with some potential issues that where, I mean, it can be a supplement that's handed out. Um, but you know, query from the board's perspective, whether we want to do that. I mean, does that give people the proper notice, the proper time to consider things? Um, you know, it has happened. Um, but so just thinking about scheduling is part of what we need to do here in our, you know, planning, non-planning exercise. Th- this is a factor, I think, at least to me, that's relevant to consider, because if we want to hit that print publication date, which has some merits, then we need to work backwards from that date, and we definitely need to propose a sub-district tonight if we want to do that. Emily, have I messed that up too badly, or have I done that well?
No, you did that very well.
Okay, good enough. Um, so.
Can I ask a question, Kevin, on, on the other side of Lincoln Street Districts?
Yes.
The district that was in the Shipyard, which is fundamentally the MBTA parking uh location, um, it seems ironic to me that here we have an MBTA community's proposal. And we, we uh, they have land that the T controls in the uh in the Shipyard. It seems kind of odd that we can't do a partnership with the T and say, well, why can't we include that as a sub-district at, at a lower density. Um, what was, what's, what's the, I was curious what the board thought about that, that parcel.
Uh, Gary, is this the twenty-nine Shipyard Drive parcel, just so I, we're talking about the same thing? Or are you talking about the lot that we didn't talk, not one of the slides we talked about tonight?
I'd have to look at the map. I can't tell what the address is.
No, I think he's, he's, he's talking about not one that we looked at.
The, the lot itself, yeah.
But the, but the larger.
Gary, that makes almost too much sense, so that's probably why it doesn't work.
I guess, Gary, I, I often say I struggle with the definition of irony. It's sort of a hard thing to pin down. I no longer struggle, right? I think that that has provided me sufficient clarity on the definition.
No, the, the multifamily housing near Webb Park in Waymouth falls within the half-mile radius of the Hangum Ferry, but it's more than a three-mile drive, like an eight-minute drive to get there to Hangum Ferry. Um, so the only way you practically get there would be by water. Like, if you had a motorboat, maybe it would be a convenient commute.
What do you mean, the ferry?
Yeah.
Gary, your suggestion is great. I think just, I mean, to me, the answer is that it doesn't qualify, so we can't. You know, as much as the board wants, I mean, I would love to talk about that. I'd love to talk about the idea of carving out five acres of a larger parcel and not considering, I mean, why that's prohibited is I, I, I don't get it. It just doesn't make sense to me, but it's not allowed.
But if you were to do, if you were to take the larger parcel and take the mixed-use credit. But if you were to do, if you were to take the larger parcel and take the mixed use credit or deduction, not credit, where you can only apply, what, twenty-five percent of the unit capacity? I mean, could we get sixty units on a larger parcel and put them on part of the parcel? It just seems so ridiculous to me that the T is imposing all this, yet we can't even talk about any a partnership over there, which would make eminent sense of that parking wasteland where they don't even use half the spaces anyway.
Yep.
Being logical, maybe I should, maybe that's not part of this process.
No, I mean, Gary, like the point is well, well received and I don't think you're meaning objection from, you know, people on the board. Just in terms of fulfilling their requirements here, it doesn't, it doesn't serve us, is the answer. At least from my perspective. All right. So I'm hearing from the board that there's some, there's an appetite for exploring the French Street parcel at a much reduced capacity, understanding what that does and also understanding how that impacts the other zones we've set up. We have some guidance on these steps to get there if we want to do that. So we can pursue that if we'd like. At the same time, we can pursue a discussion around another parcel. I'm not pushing or advocating for that. I just want to make sure that we've talked about that because if we want to do that, they're going to happen in a side by side fashion for the board, to the point that they either appear on the warrant as a side by side thing or the board gets to the point where it looks to withdraw one of the districts. Because the idea would be you propose it, it gets added to the warrant and then we can kind of pull it back if that's a direction we want to go in, in any of these subdivisions. Is there an appetite from the board's perspective to do that?
Is there another parcel along here other than French Street that is marginally compliant that we could look at again? We looked at a lot of parcels, I'm not remembering them all, but.
Yeah, you can bring up the slide presentation, Emily. And while we're doing that, Tracy, I think, I'm, I'm sorry if I interrupted you there. I don't know if you were trying to speak.
Yeah, my only, it's just a clarifying question. The, the site that's not on the list that Gary brought up, that includes the Bank of America and where Suascola is. Suascola doesn't own that building. They just, they're a tenant in that building. That still eliminates that parcel.
That's our understanding. I mean, it, it says private schools, so.
But that's ownership. Could we get a clarification on that?
We can ask, but we won't know the answer for tonight. And if you wanted to go with that option, we, we need to know.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Tracy, I asked the same question because it just, again, doesn't make sense, right? I mean, they could leave tomorrow. I mean, despite the fact that they just came in front of us to do some nice work, they could leave tomorrow. It makes very little sense.
If we're paralleling two parcels, we can always withdraw one if it's not feasible. But it seems to me to just rule it out of hand on a prescriptive criteria. I'm not sure. I'm just thinking of, we looked at a lot of parcels tonight and it just, it seems to me that some of them are marginal, some of them are close.
Yeah, look, that is an option the board can consider. I mean, that's a perfectly valid point. We could put forward that parcel. You know, it's not one of the slides, so we probably want to add it just so for people in the public when we're looking back on this. Could put it forward. The risk we run in doing that is if it turns out that Suascola in and of itself is exclude, you know, excludes the parcel, then that forecloses really further discussion about it. So then we're kind of back where we are. And that's fine, but that, that's the risk in that, I think.
I was just concerned that nothing ventured, nothing gained, that's.
Nope, understood. Look, we're looking for solutions, so that, that's certainly a viable suggestion. Other people on the board, inclination to look at another parcel? If that, if it is the parcel, is it the parcel Gary's suggesting, which is right next to the one Rita suggested essentially?
We could look.
I think a lot of the other ones were out because of the wetlands. You know, most of.
And wastewater and all of those things, right?
Sure, they were complicating.
I'm just trying to look at something that, that didn't have too many.
I mean, you could look at the one that Rita suggested too. I mean, I don't know, which one would you, did you suggest Rita, there'd been?
She said, I think that was just, would have been fifty, what did you say, Emily, about fifty units?
The one across from Bradley Woods, you know, that, yeah, I don't.
Eighty-six, so fifteen units per acre?
Yeah. So if we needed sixty, that's.
And that would have tough, I mean, that would be right on three A, right examine. I mean, the setback there is, at least for me, you know, subjectively an issue at least, in the sense that it would be really on the highway there.
Yeah.
But that, look, that, you know, that's what we're dealing with here. We're kind of choosing between a lot of bad choices.
Yeah, I mean, they're not great options, but you know, the residences along that area of Lincoln Street are all on the highway. Setbacks from Lincoln Street aren't much to Bradley Woods or to Bradley Park, you know, the Fautler Road area. Or really Bradley Park, they're all right on three A.
Well, Bradley Park's a little different than that lot, you know, but yeah. All right. So just, I mean, you know, we're an I-15, just in terms of movie discussion, we opened up to members of the public, I think, at some point as well here. Board exploring a district that Bank of America-ish, you know, you know, which I think, I think is actually Sergeant B. Terry is the address for it. But that parcel and hoping we get a clarifying answer on Suascola, is that, is that the direction the board is looking to go in?
Tough to say because it might not work.
I, I understand and agree.
Well, and what your vote would be tonight would be to request that the select board reopen the warrant and then we would advertise a hearing for some time in March, but you wouldn't be able to discuss it between now and that hearing.
Yes. And ideally in that timeframe, we get some clarity and that would be important.
I'd like to air it out. I mean, you know, just in terms of the process, air it out. We've looked at a lot of parcels that are feasible, some infeasible, some more than others. I'd just like to vet it all out just for closure.
Gary, when you say that, do you mean to ice, to picking that Sergeant B. Terry Lincoln, that, that parcel that you've identified or are you talking about all these ten parcels? Because I don't think that that's a feasible approach.
No, no, just the one.
I guess, I'm unclear what the benefit of that property is over the one at one Sergeant B. William Terry and the one adjacent on Beale Street.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at because you already have.
No, we could take another.
You have the, you have the Hancock shoe, which is on Beale Street.
That might be a better parcel. I don't know.
Can you pull that up, Emily?
Oops, sorry.
It's closer to the residential uses.
Oh, my goodness. Is, are you seeing a white screen?
Yeah, there you go.
And this is the slide that it's on. There were they? I'll have to reopen it. Yep, it's, all right, I'm going to try from PowerPoint. Adobe is not working.
So while Emily's opening that, you know, other factors to think about and there's no bearing on kind of the decision to move forward with, with one of these tonight. Is that, you know, we should talk as a board, at least from my perspective, you know, Gary's made the case for kind of the, the combined density being a good thing. I think there is a case to be made at least for the idea that, 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 that combined density, we might want to spread it out. I mean, one of the letters we got, and you know, just one granted, kind of talked about the idea of spreading out the access to that type of housing throughout town. I don't know if that resonates or not with the board. So it's just something we should talk about because this obviously does further create the density in this area, which is relatively dense. I mean, this is a different parcel. It's right across kind of from the ball field to some degree. I think the police probably will not be happy with the on-street parking that we might cause.
It does, it does meet that other set of criteria for the law, which is proximity to services and proximity to the actual transit, right? So that, that's the trade off of trying to blend this elsewhere in town. Right. Is that we fall somewhat short of that.
Certainly, certainly valid. And if, and the guiding principle is that we're trying to comply, not literally, but also with the spirit, then this certainly furthers that, that compliance.
I mean, I would agree. The other parcels and further out in the town, parish center, they're not public transportation center. Which is what this is all about, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not entirely clear what, what this is all about. I mean, as to Gordon's point, but yes, I think, Gary, that's right.
I mean, looking at this map, maybe these two parcels are a better fit. I mean, they're closer to residential. But they're, as Gordon says, they're in that radius of activity for the shipyard. Kind of best of both worlds.
So these are roughly right across from the entrance to Back River, Emily? Is that, that driveway is right there on Beale Street, right outside the green? Is that, that's what that is, just to frame my reference? Okay. Yeah, that's stopping shot there, yeah.
Yeah, across from Winchfield.
And we have to consider these parcels together, Emily, these two lots, because we need the acreage together? Is that, is that, is that the reason there?
Yeah, separately, they're not five acres.
Okay, helpful. Thank you. Look, I, I think there's value in exploring another site to understand, I mean, really compare apples to apples. I mean, and these would be fundamentally pretty different sites. So I do see some value in that process. You know, in a perfect world, we do this for another two years and look at ten more of them, but that's not the way this is set up to work. This would put us running through the whole.
Emily, how many, how many?
And Emily, that's all subject to change because we can down and upzone. So this is just as rough numbers, right? I just want to make sure it's clarifying that too.
Yep. Sorry, let's not let it meet here. I'm going to use my calculator on my phone. A hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen?
And that's at the fifteen acre, okay, fifteen units.
Yeah, give you a sense of scale across the street, Back River is forty-five units.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, I would say these two parcels would, would be, now that I've looked at the map rather than just thinking about addresses, these seem more, more to the point than the three fifty Lincoln and the cell appropriate.
I concur. I don't think the one on Lincoln Street itself, I think the depth issue there to me is going to be a big problem. I mean, just in fundamentally, you know, it doesn't seem to capture the spirit of putting ground floor housing like kind of right on the highway. This certainly removes that obstacle completely.
Yeah.
It's a little quiet over there in some ways.
This is, this seems like a nice foot.
Tracy, Gordon, Rita, does this sound like a parcel you want to move over?
Now that you brought up Lincoln Street, God, it's too small.
Okay, so it's pretty good. Okay, so Emily, I'll be guided by you here and I, and I understand that we want to, obviously the language matters here. But I see the steps as creating a new sub district so we can carve the French Street out, so we can then compare essentially this Beale Street parcel to the French Street parcel in some ways compare, but at least understand how we can impact both of them and what we might want to do. And that allows us to think of them as kind of a swap, if that's the right way to approach them. It doesn't have to be that way, but it allows us to think of it that way. Then to create a new sub district, we need to, you know, focusing on the French Street for a minute, but also I suppose here on Beale Street, we can designate kind of a subcommittee to look at some, you know, the imposition of those restrictions on any of these parcels and what we'd want to do, you know, kind of, these are the, you know, architectural, you know, setback densities, somewhat restrictions. And then we need to move, we need to move forward a recommendation to the select board to reopen the warrant and reopening, I guess actually, do we stop there reopening the warrant or we need to make a recommendation, reopen the warrant and then insert this article into it? And this article would be about the Beale Street parcel.
I think it would be about the entirety of the MBTA.
Yes, adding this as a, one of the, one of those. And then just in terms of the board, this will get public notice. Obviously, we'll, we'll go out in the same way that the French Street public noticed did, but you know, do our best to promote it even further. And we would start talking about this roughly a month from now. I don't know exactly the dates. It depends on what newspapers and all those things, but give or take, that's where we'd be. You know, that, even at the earliest date, we'd give ourselves maybe tenish days to at least hit a printed warrant deadline. I know we like each other, but that might be a couple nights a week together to get us there.
Seems like it's worth it.
Okay, works for me. Okay. Emily, Mike, I've got about you on the right language. So let's table that for one second. I think it's time for me to open this up to public discussion while you do that. Is that?
I'm going to actually give Susan Murphy a call while.
Sure, whatever, whatever processing you can undergo. So with that, it is nine twenty-five, nine thirty. Some people are still with us, is a good sign. So I ask this for members of the public. One, we receive a lot of written comments, obviously, about the piece, not necessarily about the discussion tonight. Keep your comments. You know, I'm not looking to run a timer if I don't have to, but you know, two or three minutes, please, if you can. And we'll move forward to the discussion. We'll see what kind of public response we get and we'll go from there. Cognizant of the fact that, you know, maybe members of the public might not be as interested, at least the people on, for this topic. The board does have further discussion on their zoning articles. It needs to get to tonight because we have the same time restrictions for those as well. So with that, Mr. Bright, you've been waiting really patiently. I appreciate that. Please go ahead. Just your name and address for the record.
My name's Thomas Bright. I live at thirty-four Fearing Road in Hingham. I actually own the parcel at two two five Beale Street, which is Hitchcock Shoe, not Hancock.
Oh, pardon.
And there, I mean, I didn't know about any of this until I saw the notice for this, this meeting. There are things about that parcel that the board may not be aware of. The, when we built the building thirty years ago, the board, or maybe it was the zoning board, wanted you to restricted the number of parking places, the access from Beale Street and the number of parking places we, we could have. You could only, I think the, the math here is mostly academic because neither of these two, these two parcels would have to be developed together as, as, as housing. They're, they're owned by two different people. And it's unlikely that they would actually be developed anytime soon and for multifamily housing. So it's, you're mostly just trying to hit your numbers with the state on this. But the access to, for most of our parking is restricted by the planning board to go through the parking lots of seventy-five Terry Drive, which includes the, the school location. The other thing that you, you would need to consider is the impact on the playing fields. There's considerable congestion there now and if you eliminate, I suppose if you had, well, I don't know how you'd handle the parking frankly. It would be, it would be a challenge. You know, I, I have no idea what an overlay on, on my property would do to the property value one way or another. And I don't think it really matters here. It's not a consideration. But it's, as you would do it, exploring, it would be useful if somebody talked to me about some of the history of the, of the property.
Mr. Bright, thank you. Welcome to the call. I think that is, I'll leave that point to Emily, but I think that is almost, it's a suggestion we will take you up on certainly. Mr. Perkins?
Evening, everybody. I'll be quick. Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you to planning board. We do appreciate a thoughtful discussion. As a neighbor and a, being about a hundred and fifty feet away, my frontage is about a hundred and fifty feet away from the French, French Street parcel. Mine was originally was on French Fort Hill Street before that was turned into French Street. I do find it interesting that when we discussed all the different pieces, the cons on most of the other pieces discussed flood zones, potential issues with climate change and vernal pools, et cetera. But there is no mention in the con for French Street of flood zone. And the later discussion did say, oh, yeah, well, there are pieces that are, that are flood zone. And when you look at the GIS map and just from living here from over, over thirty years, there are pieces of that that appear to be flood zone. So a little clarification on that would be interesting. And if it was a con for the other pieces, why isn't it a con, a con for this piece? The, the other quick thing is that there have been, I know you guys have been working on this for over two years and I appreciate that. I know you guys do a lot of thankless work here and you're twenty-one months into what, you know, you want to hit the town meeting. But Jeff, hopefully you appreciate that those of us who are in the area that is just, that we've known for a little over, not even a month yet, that this could impact us, that we naturally weren't a part of those first six to eight meetings or two years. So when we're saying, oh, there's been all this public notification, not really for those of us who are going to be impacted. So, and then also there's at the end of the tail end of this that, okay, we're twenty-two months in, twenty-four months, we're going to go to town meeting, we're going to make it happen. So, you know, believe me, I appreciate the thought process you guys are going through, but, you know, it feels like, okay, last thing we need to do is, is tell these folks about it. And I agree that with the craziness that subbing a larger parcel doesn't make sense. Why can't you, you know, I know you can't do it, but I'm just agreeing with you. It makes no sense that you couldn't take a piece of the AW Perry land and say, let's cut out the floodplain stuff. Let's just deal with what's left. I just don't know where, where we go and who we talk to, what kind of legislative process we need to go through to say, why can't? common sense come through here, just an editorial comment, but net-net. Thank you, we appreciate it, we know, but again, the overall thing for the planning board, the, the planning department and the select board, who everything reports up to, that, the process, we, we appreciate the process, but we really appreciate the fact that let's do the right thing as opposed to the expedient thing. We appreciate the pressure, that people are under the time pressure, but the fact that you're willing to look at a separate parcel, be able to look at a way to make the French Street parcel, if it would develop more amenable and fit into the nature of the, the neighborhood, we really do appreciate that, and we, we see that. And we really agree, and we'll tell the select people when we see them, that we agree with this approach, let's do the right thing, and not just be forced by the expedient thing. We understand the pressures, but we really appreciate it as townspeople.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Donnelly, I think you were next on my screen, and Mr. Dealey can follow, please, go ahead.
Hold on a second, been a long night just to strike you folks, but to echo Mr. Perkins, you know, really appreciate you folks taking the time to run through the, the sheets, what the pieces of property that were reviewed, so I appreciate that, thank you. Not throw a wrench in your works, but I guess if just with the select men's parcel to Beale Street, I guess, one thing I didn't understand, and if you guys didn't send me an email offline, that's fine, is we're saying that it's town-owned, but it's the, the selectmen actually own it, and there's been talk of selling it before. So why wouldn't we look at that as a revenue generator for the town, since we're always looking for money? As an economic asset we could sell and then meet our requirement? Just something to think about. I know you guys, as Tim said, we're all coming to this late on your party. And, you know, one thing, because it doesn't really seem clear what the definition of town-owned land is, of this, the, that seems a little vague on how it's being used.
Let me pause, Emily, can you answer that question? I mean, let's just address that, if other people are interested in that. Or Susan, sorry, I see you there somewhere, Susan.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm here, Kevin, I don't know if you.
Okay, but please go ahead.
Probably on the next page of your screen. So I'm Susan Murphy on Towns Real Estate Council. I have the state guidelines open, and in the definition of excluded land, it's all publicly land, own land. Except for portions of lots determined to be developable public land, but in order to be developable public land, there has to be a more formal process to kind of make it available, and the town does not have that ability to do that between now and town meeting and, and getting the zoning approved.
Well, then that goes to Mr. Perkins' point of let's not expediency get in the way of doing what's right for the town.
Yeah, Mr. Don, I'm going to push back, though, because from my perspective, my job, I feel very strongly, my job as the chair of the planning board is to get the town in a position where it can comply. Suggesting the selectmen's parcel would be essentially setting the town up to fail compliance, and I personally am not interested in doing that at all. That's not the area I want to explore. If the public feels differently, that's what town meeting is for, but I feel very strongly as chair of the planning board that I do not want to see the town in a position where it at least cannot comply, even if it votes to say yes.
As a taxpayer, I think I'm in my rights to ask the questions.
Of course, don't, welcome it, I just, that's a decision I made, I mean, I think my colleagues in the board agree with us.
Okay, I, I just, I had to ask the question, but I did want to thank you guys for all the work you've done, and how much you've shared this evening. This is what we've been asking for, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Dealey, please go ahead, just, can you also, I just reminded by staff, state your name, address for the record as well, when you state your name, please.
John Dealey, yeah.
Yeah, we can hear.
John Dealey, fourteen Wood Lane Court, which is just off of Beale Street. A couple of quick points, first is, I just want to put a pitch in again for the three fifty Lincoln Street property, otherwise known as the Flatley property. I think it's a terrific site for this, it's close to the shipyard, might help the businesses over there, closer to the ferry. We got in the Sealer School there, note that a good portion of the Sealer School moved to Norwell recently, within the last year, and who knows whether the rest of it's going the same way, so maybe the Sealer School is not a big deal there. So I just want to make that pitch. And the second is, it would be helpful if there was some kind of a ability to see what the Cove and what the shipyard properties would look like with the new zoning that's being recommended. That, you know, what, how is that going to change what the Cove looks like, and what the Hingham Shipyard properties look like?
So Emily, I think, thank you, Mr. Dealey. Emily, I think we talked about this a little, just kind of the delta between what the proposal would allow, and obviously, it's not finalized yet versus what's there. But if that's not, like, published in a piece of paper, can we add that, a slide to that, this, if, in the, in these sub districts, this is what the, the, the buy right zoning would allow in them versus what's there, just so people have a point of reference?
Yeah, I could show the density that exists on the ground versus the density that is proposed. That doesn't necessarily answer Mr. Dealey's question about what it would look like, and I don't have any sort of software that would, would help me design it. But, and additionally, you know, the intent of those districts is rather to reflect and recognize the multifamily housing we've already built near transit. It's not necessarily to encourage near-term redevelopment of any of those properties.
Understood completely, so let's just, I, I think just in terms of just kind of the delta on the ground versus what could go on the ground would be just another data point that's helpful. Thank you. Judy Sneath, welcome back.
Hello, everyone, I am Judy Sneath, I live at eighty-nine North Street. Again, thank you for all the work you're doing on this. I just have two quick comments or questions, and the first is, have you spoken to this?
Judy, we lost you for a second there.
The role of commercial property in our tax base. You know, it's very easy to sit here and say, oh, let's just put it on the commercial property. But I do believe that we've spent a lot of years, you know, shoring up our commercial tax base, so that the tax burden, which, as we all know, is ever increasing, is not borne entirely by residential property owners. So thinking about the whole town, just, and not just about the people on a certain street, I think that would be really important. And then, secondly, because I do live on a certain street, I remember when the Cove was built, the people on Beale Street were very upset that the town was supporting that density on that building, because there are a lot of residential homeowners on Beale Street, and just like they are on French Street, and just like Beale Street, French Street and Fresh River are busy roads that can accommodate a little more density than interior, you know, in the middle of suburban neighborhood. And so I love the idea of just reducing that to eight units per acre and upzoning a portion at the shipyard, in order to share this a little bit, and to have a diversity of housing options. This is an opportunity to build a lot of housing eventually, not even now, as Mr. Bright said, this is not happening anytime soon. But, you know, be creative and not so, you know, it's got to all be in that area, because that area, as you all know, has had tremendous growth, and the people who live there also care about their neighborhoods. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Judy. Uh, Mr. Roth?
Hi, Jonathan Roth, A Stonegate. I just want to thank the board for the presentation today, and the discussion is very, very helpful. One thing I did, and this could be a takeaway as well, but it was mentioned towards the top, that the potential penalties, I think, you know, the revenues from, from impacted programs was one million last year, and I think the projection was it was going to go to ten million next year. So I'm curious how that jumped ten X, if, what, what, you know, the projection there in terms of what our potential penalty is, but, you know, what this gets to is the, you know, we talked about tax base, you know, it's the same rate, I think, you know, between residential and commercial. And so, you know, the potential of growing the commercial tax base being an initiative. In, in some respects, you know, it just sounds like, you know, we're, we're making a decision based on dollars and cents here, you know, we don't want to lose money on a commercial tax base, we don't want to lose money from the state. So let's just put, you know, a hundred and twenty units in a single-family home residential neighborhood, that just totally violates the spirit of that, you know, that neighborhood, to save a few bucks for the town. So, you know, I, I think that's one concern that I have, in terms of motivations here, and, and the consequences thereof. And secondly, I think, you know, the walkthrough of the potential sites was extremely helpful. You know, I'm disappointed that, I guess, we're doing it, we did it today and not previously, but that being said, I think that, you know, at, at least to, to my, to my view, there is a number of viable sites in and around, you know, the shipyard area, which I think if you, if you choose to live in that area, it's a style of living that, you know, is, is definitely different from other residential neighborhoods in Hingham that are very viable, and I think a lot of them have a lot in common, that, and, and none of them have, like, the French Street location sticks out to me like a sore thumb, I think, you know, i- if there was like one of those games, you know, which one doesn't belong, the French Street one would, would, would be the choice, just given its location and residential neighborhood. I, I don't consider French Street a high throughput, you know, road, it's definitely not like, you know, a side street, but it's also not, you know, three A, so, you know, that being said, I think, you know, I definitely support looking into the Beale Street location, it looks like, you know, it'd make a lot of sense, it's close to, you know, shops, restaurants, public transit. You know, I think in the Q and A, to, from last meeting, there was three bullets of the, you know, the spirit and goal of this act. And all three of them would not be met by the French Street location. It's not reducing pub, uh, single occupancy vehicles, it's not close to restaurants or schools, it's not close to public transit. So it's, you know, there's a spirit question here, there's a substance question here, and, and to me, it, it just seems like the Beale location serves that purpose, you know, a whole lot better, both for the community, you know, to support it with other similar like Avalon and, and Cove, et cetera, but also in, in spirit of serving what we're actually trying to do, which is those bullet points in question four of the Q and A. And so my, actually, my last question is on the power of site review, because it's something that had come up previously, that, you know, the town reserves the right to, you know, with site, site review to, you know, to yay or nay certain things, but I think my understanding is that it, it pretty clearly states that it is not meant to be a mechanism to basically stop a project from going through. So it's like, and, and that's a clarification I'm looking for in terms of, you know, eight, a hundred and twenty units, obviously, you know, doesn't fit the character, you know, of this, of this neighborhood. And we've had discussions, you know, about the single-family homes on Ward Street and, and Crow Pointer and what have you. You know, small specifications about retaining laws, et cetera. How does that reconcile with site plan review not being able to, to essentially put their foot down, if something clearly, you know, even on the front end, we know would not fit the character of this neighborhood?
So, I'll, thank you, Mr. Roth, I'll let Emily, I mean, I think that's misinformation that we talked about a bit last time, kind of the, the, the the ability of site plan review, at least the process to happen here, and, and how that would work in line with this. I mean, my understanding, and I think Emily, you mentioned this tonight, is that site plan review happens, it would happen for any other project in town, whether or not it's an MBTA community zoned parcel or not, and that's just full stop. I mean, it, it works the same way as it has, you know. I happily invite you to, to talk to staff further, or, you know, to talk to me further about how site plan review works. I mean, you're seeing a bit of it tonight, but the board looks at all sorts of different projects and site plan reprocess, and all sorts of different factors. You know, the Ward Street one, one of the questions was about suitability for the neighborhood, but site plan review is a lot more than that, it's parking, it's, you know, drainage, and it impacts, you know, it's essentially product review.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but I was just reading what the, the support provided from question eight, from section three A, as a right zoning, and it goes into site plan review there, and it says that the site plan therefore cannot, basically cannot prohibit a project from going through, and I, my understanding is if I came to the board and say, I want to build, you know, right now, and, you know, on my property, some, you know, monstrosity, it, it would be declined. So I'm just curious how that reconciles this project.
Yeah, Emily, so can you, can you, can you, or, I mean, Susan, you're happy, you guys are a little close to kind of where that language comes in, I think it's just a state disposition to not like the concept of site plan review more than it is a, a reflection of the communities act, but I don't want to posit where that, exactly why that's there, but I understand when you read that on its face, why you'd read it that way.
Yeah, and, and I think Susan provided a parallel at the last hearing in response to the same question, that, you know, site plan review, like subdivision approval, it's for a buy right use. So provided that the project complies with all the standards, unless waived by this board, it's eligible for review. Most of our permitting mechanisms are not intended to stop development, but rather to facilitate and control it, whether that's site plan review, a special permit, or, you know, the board subdivision regulations. So I think that's why the boards had some discussion about refining those regulations to make sure the form of any potential future development on that site or others is more consistent with, you know, the form of development surrounding it.
Thank you, Emily. Mr. Christensen, please go ahead.
Hi, Chris Christensen, one quail run. Just want to start off saying, I, I really commend Emily, Town Planning, the board for the discussion tonight, as well as the presentation, methodically laying out the different options and what the considerations are. I think, you know, we talked about that a couple weeks ago. That was asked for, and, and I, you know, really appreciate the work and the effort that was put into that, I think that was well done. Just want to ask a question, is there a reason that we would not consider a special town meeting to take away some of the urgency around compliance? I know we did that not long ago for the override, and it seems to me we shouldn't be hamstrung by or rush a parcel eval process, or perhaps have been discussions with the state, I mean, I think there was some discussion around entertaining flexibility to current rules for some of the ferry parking property, for example, because of our timeline. I'm, again, really encouraged by that conversation tonight around some of the alternative proposals, it would be great to really flesh them out, and I just want to make sure we're not rushing that process, and what could be a very thoughtful, thorough, you know, getting everybody on board, because of an April town meeting for December thirty-first deadline, so we're totally recognized, it's, it's not, it's, it sounds easy, I know it's not a trivial ask to have a special town meeting, there's a lot of work that goes into that, but just, just curious if that's an option, and want to make sure that, I, I would love to get it done in this April, and then have everything wrapped up by then, so that we can have alignment and then move this forward and, and move on, but if not, you know, would there be consideration of that?
So I'll, I'll do my best to answer that. I asked the same question, I, you know, it's a perfectly reasonable question. One, the planning board doesn't get to decide whether or not we have a special town meeting or not, so, you know, in some senses, that's not, that's just not within our purview, it's not within our control. It is an option, I mean, there, there always is an option to have a special town meeting, I won't pretend to know all the considerations that go into that, Emily, I'll defer to you a little on that, but that's still, I mean, that's well outside of our purview. I've come around to the thinking that, to some degree, that if we discuss this in April, and whatever town meeting decides, if they say no to this, if the town wants to be in compliance, it has from April until December to get into compliance, we have a special town meeting in, but, but October, November, and the town says no, that, that could be a potential issue for us getting into compliance, and just a factor that I've been thinking about and thinking about that, not saying it's the right one, it's just a factor that I have thought about, because initially, I said, hey, we should, my mind, we have a need seven-ish, you know, eight-month delta between town meeting and compliance deadline. But I've come around to the idea that it, it's our job, at least, I, I want it to be our job to get us into a place where we can be in compliance in, in our normal due course. You know, the town votes, I mean, the planning board is just making a suggestion, a recommendation to advisory, and then to the select board, and the, you know, and then the town will vote, and whatever the town decides to do will be what we do, and I'm very comfortable with that concept, I mean, town meeting works really well. But from my perspective, I think there's a lot of positives to at least giving us a chance to be in compliance for the April's town meeting. Completely understand that people might disagree with that, but that's how I come about it. Gordon, do you?
Yeah, no, just, just to add, because I, I, you know, when, when you mentioned the idea of investigating perhaps that MBTA law, for example, right? And some of these other alternatives, which I would dearly like to do, that won't even happen on a town timeframe, right? It's not, it's, it's not in the town's, in the state's interest to provide flexibility to anybody right now. flexibility to anybody right now. That would be some legislative fix down the road or some such thing, right? So what we'd be dealing with with the extra time is kind of the universe that we were talking about tonight, which is not to say we don't necessarily do that. I just want to manage expectations that some of those really logical things that we are not allowed to look at now, we still would probably be able to look at, even if we're going to do that. So I just wanted to make that kind of sort of unfortunate reality.
Yeah, I mean, the public discourse around this has become that, you know, this set, there's a set of requirements and there's a set of possible consequences. Those consequences have expanded, you know, to the point that the governor is talking about this, right? To the point that, you know, talent Milton is receiving letters on this. And again, I don't know what's going to happen and I'm not, I'm just, I'm not interested in putting Hingham in a place where we are the ones receiving a letter or we are the ones where the AG is potentially suing us. It just doesn't sound like a prudent course of action. If that's where we end up, so be it, but I don't see it as our job on the planning board to help us get there. I see the job as to help us avoid that outcome. And so that's the posture I'm taking. And that's how I'm looking at this. The other members of the public, I only see a limited screen here. Want to comment or speak on this night? Please go ahead. Raise your hand. Name and address to the record. All right, I'm not seeing anybody. Emily, I'll circle back with you while we're on this. Have we talked to Susan and do we feel comfortable kind of with, which I see is kind of multi-step, but all within the same kind of, the same approach to kind of get us terrible tonight. So please go ahead.
Yeah, so we crafted a potential recommended vote that would simply authorize the community planning director. And I'm sorry, let me get to a different screen. It'll be easier to read. Excuse me. Sorry. So to authorize the community planning director to submit a request on behalf of the planning board to reopen the warrant and insert a proposed zoning article that would create regulations that allow multifamily development by right within a new overlay district consisting of approximately 50 acres of land. And then it would refer to all of the assessors' maps and addresses for all of the shipyard and Cove properties, but swap out the French Street properties for one Sergeant William B. Terry Drive and two 25 Beale Street.
But that, that is a proposed alternate article. The current article that we're investigating now with the districts you put forward, we're still pursuing at the same time.
Yeah, presumably you'll continue that hopefully to the end of the month, February 26th, then we can keep working through the details on that one.
Just a detailed question, Emily. Is it two 24 Beale Street or two 25 Beale Street?
I will double check.
I thought the owner said it was two 24. I could be wrong.
It's two 25.
Okay, good.
I think that works. I don't, I mean, trusting Emily, you know, yours and Susan's, but I think that that gets us where we want to be, at least to the, the request of the select board. We also have some work to do about creating a new sub-district and I think I like the suggestion of creating a subcommittee of the board. I mean, we can't, it can't be more than two of us on it. I mean, that, you know, in terms of meeting law. You know, Gary, Tracy, if you're interested in that work and you're so inclined to help in that regard, you know, we'd have an overlay of some, certainly expertise beyond mine to look at kind of restrictions is the right word, but kind of ways to think about what we can do in those sub-districts to, to make them more in tune with the neighborhoods. I mean, certainly with one objective.
I'd be interested.
Yeah, I emailed Emily earlier today and said, I can do it.
I hear the enthusiasm, Tracy. Thank you.
I'm losing my, I'm losing my voice here.
No, I do appreciate it very much. I'm just kidding. Emily, so in, in, in getting those other two objectives done, tell me how we do that.
So I'll reach out to Tracy and Gary to schedule some time where we can work through some of these design details. Those you can recommend as modifications to the pending zoning article. So they're, they're a little bit different than, you know, swapping out the actual parcels.
And how about the creation of the new, the new sub-district if that's the right terminology?
That's the same thing, that that is housed within the body of the article itself.
So we're going to take action tonight? Okay.
Yeah, that's a correct.
All right. So Emily, I'll make a motion that we, and I'll let you read this in again to the record, just so it's kind of clear. I'll go ahead and let you read this into the record and then I'll make a motion that we adopt the language, you know, the recommendation.
Yeah, so the, the motion would be to authorize the community planning director to submit a request on behalf of the planning board to reopen the warrant and insert a proposed zoning article that allows, excuse me, that would create regulations that allow multifamily development by right within a new overlay district consisting of approximately 50 acres of land. As shown, and all the assessors' maps would be referenced at 319 Lincoln Street, Hewitt's Landing, 111 Fitzroy Drive, one Sergeant William Terry Drive, two 25 Beale Streets, 350 Beale Street or the Cove and 152 Shipyard Drive as required by section three A of the zoning act.
And Kevin, I, this is Susan. Sorry, I just want to throw in there and to amend the Hingham zoning map accordingly, because that needs to be part of it as well.
Okay. It's not a part of the current one. Because the, the maps with the new overlay district is referred to geographically.
Yeah, the zoning articles need to reference a map amendment as well, so.
Do we need to vote to fix the one that's already pending?
Why don't we include it and we'll go back? I thought we covered that in the other ones, so.
Yeah, I just copied and pasted, I think, but I, I could have missed something.
All right. So I make a motion that the planning board, make a motion to the planning board and move forward with the motion as read by Emily tonight.
Second.
And as modified, I think as modified by Susan Murphy as well, just in case we need to include that. Gordon, second. So roll call vote on that. Gary, Tom, Ruckick?
Aye.
Rita Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Schreiber? Gordon Carr?
Right.
And I'm an I as well. I think that does it for this discussion. Thank you very much to members of the public for your participation. Thank you very much, Emily, Michael, Susan, for the work that we've done.
You do have to continue this article.
Oh, yeah. Sure. And I'd make a motion that we continue the discussion of, now you have to bring me back to my, my revised agenda. Make a motion, we can be discussing the MBTA communities, multifamily housing to the February 26th meeting of the planning board at 7:00 PM. I think.
Gary.
Second, Gary, it's a roll call. Rita?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So again, thank you, members of the public. Thank you very much. With the board, we have a little more work to do. So I expect on the 26th that we will get into some of the details from Tracy and Gary's review. And we'll go from there. So it's 10 o'clock. We have two zoning articles to discuss. Mike, I mean, give us a sense, one, if we don't do them tonight because it's getting late, what that looks like for our calendar and then two, yo, perhaps which of these two we should talk about tonight and start with, at least depending on where it's going to go. My sense is we have a more, we've had more finite, more discussion and more full discussion on the abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming conditions. And maybe we'd be in a place to look at moving that forward tonight. Don't want to speak for the colleagues on the board. And we haven't had as yet as robust a discussion about the breweries, but I'm open to talking about both of them. You know, it's 10 o'clock, but go ahead, Mike.
Um, yeah. So in terms of scheduling, sorry, I'm just pulling up.
No, please, thanks.
What we have. So the next hearing on the 26th, we'll have MBTA as well as three permitting applications as of right now, one of which is a continued application the board's already heard for an FRD and then two new applications. I guess we're running up against the same deadline with the printing of the warrant as the MBTA article. So it would come down to, does the, does advisory, would, you know, in the select board, would they have enough time to hear these articles during that timeframe? I don't know. It kind of depends on how close to that deadline the board wants to get.
Yeah. So, I mean, colleagues on the board, I mean, look, we can push through discussion, not push through, we can have the discussion tonight about both of these, see where we end up, if we're ready to move forward in either and what that might look like. My sense is if we keep kicking your hand down the road on the zoning, we're going to hit a deadline that we have to talk about all of them at some point. We know that come March 12th or something, give or take, we're going to have a series of intense discussions. So I mean, I think in a perfect world, we'd finish up these discussions prior to that. That leaves us with the 26th and that leaves us with the potential of the sixth. I'm not even sure the sixth is a firm meeting date for us, right?
I'm sorry, Kevin, I missed that.
The first Monday in March, is that even a confirmed meeting date for us, Mike?
I mean, it certainly can. We don't have any, we don't have any permitting scheduled for that night. It would be March 4th.
Fourth, sorry. Thank you. Okay. So, look.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
Through the warrant articles that night on the fourth, instead of any other.
We could, but we'd be limited to talking about the existing ones. So we could do, we could talk about all of them. But these would be the MBTA communities, we could not yet talk about the new, you know, the newish proposed site. We'd be, we'd be constrained to talking about. And Emily, I don't want to misspeak, but that's because of the publication deadlines and kind of the notice we have to give, right? We have to get, we have to kind of hit a certain target outside. Okay.
Yeah, we did get confirmation, we can advertise in the Patriot Ledger instead of the Journal, so that could likely bring us back a week, but we'll have to sketch out that timeline again.
Yeah. So Rita, this is in the notes, but and I talked with Emily about this earlier, so just, you know, thinking about the calendar. We have to hit, you know, we had to publish this once and publish it again. The Hingham Journal publishing schedule was not great for us, would have put us behind a week. So we talked about using a different paper, which is just endless comment with the Patriot Ledger. I guess we can do that. So we can publish there and kind of because we can hit the publishing deadline dates, we can start that discussion, but I think the week earlier you're referring to Emily is probably still just give or take the 12th-ish, right? I mean, something like that, right? So it's not getting up to the fifth, which are the fourth, which would have been a, which would have been a great date, quite frankly.
Do we want to, because nobody can kick me under the table, do, do we want to add a date on that week of the 26th?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I guess the question I had is that, yeah, we could do that.
Gordon, would that be for all zoning articles or would that just be for these two?
Uh, maybe just for these two, whatever orphans we have that don't currently have a.
I mean, in theory, you could put, you could put the MBTA article on the 26th as it already is now and just continue it to that night if you'd rather and just leave the 26th open for permitting. But it's, you know, you can choose any, anything.
How many permitting applications are on that night, Mike? I'm sorry.
Three.
Three. I mean, I think you should continue all to the 26th and if we don't get to them again, then the fourth is your backup.
Right.
Or some meeting later that week. It would have to be what Thursday you're on though.
So we're going to be talking about the MBTA on the 26th also?
Yeah, we continue it tonight, Rita, because we continue tonight because we can talk about the kind of the pre-existing communities act piece of it. And depending on the work that Tracy, Gary and staff can do, we, you know, we potentially could have new discussion there or might not, and we could just continue past it. So we just don't know. I don't want to talk about too much to close that out a bit, but it's on the agenda now.
So Kevin, in terms of the other two that we're planning to talk about tonight, given the hour, we do have the flexibility to talk about them at a subsequent meeting?
Yeah, so we can, we can just punt to the 26th, sorry, I should better language. We can continue to the 26th and that's fine. I don't know what that meeting is going to look like. We can put these first, quite frankly, in the zoning discussion. So we at least, we make sure we have discussion on them and we can then figure out what we want to do with them next. Don't think we prioritize them in that same ordering way. And then to Gordon's point, we can then, we can always open a discussion on the give or take the 29th or the fourth, which currently is open, focused just on zoning. And I guess it potentially comes up like on the, on the permitting side of things, you know.
I mean, we, another option is, yes, what you just said, but also you, I mean, you could just post an agenda preemptively for the Tuesday or Wednesday with just zoning articles and then cancel it if you're not thinking that you're going to need it. It can be canceled.
So we don't have to wait until 29th. We could do the 26th or 7th is your point, at least these would be, at least not.
Twenty seven or eight, yeah.
You're twenty seven, thirty, yes.
We could post an agenda the week before.
Yeah.
In anticipation of potentially needing that and then just canceling it if you don't end up needing it.
Sure.
That's an option as well.
So I'll leave my, go ahead, Gary. Sorry, please.
If it's February 27th, I have a conflict on that evening, but pretty, pretty committed. I would appreciate it if we could do it one refresh because I'm pretty well.
Yep. So, so I guess it's a scheduling wise then. So to Mike's point, we can now decide, so the 27th probably doesn't work, the 28th, we can do the 26th and at the 26th, we don't get where we want to be, then we can do either the 29th or the 4th. You know, we obviously have a lot of options. I don't know how your families feel about multiple planning board meetings a week, but, you know, another thing to consider. So appetite for doing it on the 20th, you're pushing these to the 26th. We'll open the zoning discussion with these and then see where we end up and then we can move these either to the 29th, I'm assuming Friday night, the first is probably not an option or the fourth. And the communities act obviously as well, at least then we need further time to talk about that. The other option now is to put, to push them to the 28th, the 20, the 28th and post an agenda item for that. If for some reason the Wednesday is better than the following Monday. It's very confusing for, so I think the extent that people are open on March 4th, we can plan to have a zoning discussion then. I think that probably makes the most sense.
Sounds good.
Okay. So then I'm going to make a motion.
Keep us on schedule. I think that's supposed to be off that week, but I don't think it's going to work. So I think I'll be around, so.
Gordon, there's no vacation from the planning board. Gordon, I'm happy to push that discussion to the 29th though, if that helps you. I mean, it's agnostic on that, on that front.
Uh, no, I think, no, let's go with the fourth.
Okay, so.
Keep us on a Monday.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we continue the discussion of the, do I need to, I guess I should formally open these. I mean, I don't know if I quite did that. So I opened the discussion on the brew pub brewery winery, distillery used zoning bylaw and open discussion on the abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming conditions zoning bylaw. And I make a motion, we continue the discussion of both of those to the February 26th, 2026, 2024 meeting of the planning board starting at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Rita. Roll call vote, Tracy? Gary?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Rita?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. And to members of the public that are on the call that we're looking for that discussion, one, thank you for staying with us. Two, I promise you that at least except we can, we will put them first in the zoning. So you don't have to sit through another disoning discussion if this is what you're here for. So I thank you for your patience and apologize if this disrupted your plans for this evening. All right. I think that takes us to our zoning discussion. Mike, administrative items, I think we did kind of scheduling there, so that helps us. Emily, anything else on your end?
No, not that I can think of.
Okay.
So just because I learned it and didn't know it, so, and it's going to likely create a problem that we can discuss later. Town, town meeting has been moved to Wednesday, April 24th. It is not Monday, April 26th. I don't, I don't remember when that move happened, but I missed it. Which is going to be a problem, but we'll discuss that later.
That was just announced in the last couple of weeks.
I, I should make one other suggestion. Tomorrow evening, advisory was planning to take up two of the zoning articles. We just found out about that late in the game. Town, and I'm not certain what's happening with their meeting. It was going to be hybrid. Town hall will be closed. I'm not sure if they're moving to full zoom, but in any event, I can go to represent the board. But you should probably start to think about liaisons to the other zoning articles in the event you're willing or able to go to more evening meetings to talk about zoning. I don't have their review schedule mapped out yet, but I don't anticipate meetings on zoning articles, at least for next week because of school vacation. And I'll just keep you in the loop when I do here. Unless anybody wants to volunteer for particular articles tonight.
Yeah, Emily, maybe, I mean, only because I'm not sure what articles will end up advancing or not. So not that it impacts what's already been done. We certainly can set up representatives for those. That's a good suggestion, but we might not know yet the scope. For instance, it's entirely possible we, we kind of pull back or request a pullback of some of these. You know, to Gordon's point about having a lot of zoning articles and maybe giving them their due discussion. So what is tomorrow night, Emily, that advisory is considering?
So the two were the Harbor Overlay District, the height. Um, so the two were, um, the harbor overlay district, the height, um, changes and nursing home, the first one, that changes to the nursing home use.
Is AdCom being now given town hall is close?
The, I don't, I don't have an update on that. When I last heard from the town administrator's office, they didn't know whether AdCom was going to cancel or reschedule rather, like most of the other, um, town boards, or if they were going to move everything to full remote.
Okay. Brenda, are you, are you, are you here raising your hand to help us in that discussion? Please join, go ahead.
Happy to have both of the AdCom agendas for this week. Tomorrow night we are Zoom and only doing the award articles, including, as Emily said, update nursing home use and maximum height in the harbor overlay district. And at the moment on the Thursday agenda is, um, electric vehicle charging and personal wireless service.
Do you know the liaison for those two offhand, Brenda? The Thursday evening ones?
Thursday, no, I'm going to have to look that up for you, but I can email you.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, great. Thanks.
You don't happen to be mine. That's why.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brenda. That's really helpful. Thank you. Okay. I mean, we have four that are coming up this week. I, I mean, um, and I, they don't, I mean, that leaves us a lot, you know, many more, but, um, some of the bigger ones. Any interest in the board and in taking those zoning bylaws and to the extent we need to, I mean, some of them are somewhat top of the planetary, I think, but attending the advisor committee meetings on Tuesday, Thursday respectively. Okay. Maybe, I mean, we're going to have to get to representatives at some point, Emily. I mean, we're not there yet. Comfort level with letting advisory discuss them without a planning board representative there?
Yeah, I think these, you know, you advanced them because they were fairly straightforward. Um, I get a copy of the comment typically be the direct comment anyways, um, beforehand. So, um, you know, I'll just flag it for you, Kevin, you know, if there's anything you need to look at.
Perfect. That's, that sounds good all, all around. I mean, we'll get there. Um, and, um, and obviously we'll see where, um, some of this discussion around communities act and whatever else might have, link to your town, town meeting discussion. There's a little more robust preparation that goes on. So perfect. All right. With that, oh, Brenda, please go ahead. Sorry.
Al McDonald has the wireless and Judd Kaplan has the, um, electric vehicle charging.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. I think that brings us to conclusion of our meeting. Anything else from the board? All right, perfect. So it's 10:14 PM. I'd make a motion that we adjourn this meeting of the planning board.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any objections? All right, hearing none, all approved. Uh, thank you very much, guys. Thank you. Really appreciate the time and attention. Emily, Michael, thank you. I know the prep that went into this extraordinary.
Great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very, very much.